Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 21st Board of Selectmen's meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Tonight, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Bill, will you lead us tonight?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands one nation under God and the universal which we believe in.
Okay. Is there anybody here for citizens in Port tonight? No? Katie, anybody online? Okay. All right. We'll go on to our next agenda item is a Common Vic application for Chicken Bites at 10 Belcher Road. So they, do we have them here?
Be on Zoom.
Okay. On. Yep. Hold on one second, guys. We're just trying to find them up on, oh, here they are. Here they are.
It's a mute.
Okay. Can you guys say hello so we can see if we hear you?
Hello, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
All right, I can hear you both. Great. Okay, welcome. So we have, is it Eric?
No, you have Ryan Rosa. The application was submitted by Erica Scott, my wife, but obviously on behalf of the ownership.
Okay, okay, perfect. We have Ryan and Albert.
Alberta, hi, how are you?
Okay, great. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your plans?
So, we've been awarded an opportunity to take over the current space at the Foxborough Sports Center, to take our product from Billerica, where we've been a staple of the town there for 38 years. And the opportunity came to us if we wanted to open up a, I would say, a little bit of a snack shop on steroids and bring our product, which is Chicken Bites, salads, soups, desserts, soft serve. We do hard scoop ice cream in Billerica. We have a full-blown shop of 30, I think it's a 40-foot in total salad bar. We offer various soups, and we were asked if we'd like to come into the Foxborough location, so that's what we're doing now.
Okay, great. Yeah, I saw, so this is going to be Monday through Friday, I mean, I'm sorry, Monday through Sunday, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Yep. So we offer breakfast, and I know with the ring population, it's early mornings, late nights, and we want to be there to service the people of not only the arena, but the residents of Foxborough as well.
Yeah. Well, we know those hockey games, hockey games are very, very early, so you're hitting everybody. That's great. So Katie, I see, you know, we looked here, so we're waiting on final for insurance, right?
Yep.
Waiting on the insurance, and everybody else is signed off, okay, just waiting for the final food inspection.
Right, so after the Common Vic, they'll then come in for a food inspection right before food enters the premise.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
No.
No? Okay. You're good?
I'm good.
All right, I guess we'll take a motion. Deb?
Motion to approve the Common Vic application for Chicken Bites located at 10 East Belcher Road inside Foxborough Sports Center.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Great, great, yeah. Welcome.
I'm going to be there this weekend.
I'm going to be there this weekend.
We won't be there this weekend, but you can take a peek inside. We're almost done with the renovations in the front and just waiting on a couple things, and we'll be ready for the final inspection. But we do appreciate the vote, and we look forward to being a partner of the town of Foxborough.
Awesome. Welcome to Foxborough. We wish you good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. All right. Next up, we have Libby O'Neil for our update from Boydin Library.
Just trying to get back to the slideshow.
Yeah.
All right, perfect. Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me come to your meeting tonight to give a department update on the library. For those of you that don't know, my name's Libby O'Neil, and I'm the director of the Boydin Library. Let's see if I can handle this slideshow. Okay. To start off, I wanted to bring your attention to our new vision statement and mission statement. They are part of our new strategic plan. I won't read it all, but our mission statement is quite different than what it was before, so I will read that one, so everyone can have it. At the Boydin Library, our mission is to create an inclusive community hub that fosters lifelong learning, enrichment, and active community engagement through thoughtful and curated diverse collections, innovative programs, and meaningful community partnerships. We empower individuals to explore, discover, and connect with others. As I said, these statements are part of our new strategic plan for FY '24 through FY ' '29. We completed it over the summer, and the Board of Library Trustees approved it at the September 2023 trustee meeting. You can view the new strategic plan through this link on the slides, or you can go to our website, and it's under the About Us tab to see the full strategic plan. So I just wanted to take a moment to talk about libraries in general. The Boydin Library, though, continues to be the community hub of Foxborough, and it's especially important to highlight that libraries really are for everyone. It is a thriving center for all, regardless of age, race, religion, occupation, educational level, financial position, orientation, gender identity, or physical ability. We really want to highlight that, you know, the library is for anyone and everyone. We offer enriching programs and provide free services for patrons of all ages. So here is a snapshot of 2023. The number of visits we had to the library in 2023 was 102,570. In total, we had 522 programs with a total of 9,247 people in attendance. This is a huge difference from programs in 2022, the year that I started, where there was only 185 programs offered. So as you can see, since I've been the director there, we've really ramped up and focused on programs, and programs for everyone, too. Our circulation numbers for print materials is 131,904, and also, it continues to rise in popularity for the digital, eBooks, audiobooks, that's 37,408. We also have new services and programs, which I will touch on in some upcoming slides. So here's some pictures from programs that we did in 2023. The first one, the top up there, is from our 2023 Community Reads event. We had an author, Abdi Norifdin. He wrote Call Me American, and he came and took a picture with the book and did an author talk. We had a super-popular floral decorating workshop for adults. In the horse and carriage here, we have staff and friends of the library that participated in the Founder's Day Parade. In the bottom with the owl, we had an owl program for children and families during February School Vacation Week. Our children's librarian reached out, and the Foxborough Rotary Club, she's accepting a donation here from the Rotary Club to purchase Chromebooks to start a coding club for kids. The Chromebooks will be used for all ages, but that was the start of it, and she's kicked off the coding club, and it's been very popular. And we also have a crafting night for adults here. So our teens at the Boydin Library, let's see here, I'm ahead of myself. Since redesigning and opening the teen room in April of 2023, we've created a welcoming and safe space for all teens to gather, study, and socialize at the Boydin Library. We're averaging about 20 to 25 teens every day after school. Our teen librarian currently has 15 teen volunteers and held 75 programs in 2023. And we are so glad and excited that we have her becoming full-time as of July 1st, to be a consistent presence for the teens and expand on the volunteer program. She's had to deny teens for volunteering at the library because she just didn't have the time. Now she will be able to, and as well as being able to offer more programs and outreach to the schools. Here are some teen room programs. In the top, we have here the ribbon cutting when we reopened the teen room to the kids in April of 2023. In the middle, top middle, we have one of our teen volunteers. She attended our Read-In Program that we had in October to celebrate the freedom to read. We have kids hanging out in the teen room. One of the programs was a metal smithing bookmark workshop, a beading craft program, and then a journalism workshop with Jerry Love. So some things I listed here that are available at the library, we have, as you know, books, the latest fiction, nonfiction titles. We're continually purchasing for the collections each month. Same goes for CDs, DVDs, and audiobooks. We have 68 magazines and newspaper subscriptions. We have public computers, mobile printing, free Wi-Fi, a 3D printer, educational toys and activities in the children's room. We have a group tutoring room as well as meeting room space. And new, we have study pods for individuals that need a quiet workspace. Speaking of the study pods, we used to get a lot of requests for private space at the library to conduct virtual meetings or interviews, and we were not able to provide that. So we purchased three study pods. It looks sort of like a phone booth here, and we hope that that would solve the need for patrons to provide a space to take those Zoom calls or telehealth appointments or virtual interviews. And these units are equipped with power outlets, a light, and charging ports. They don't entirely cancel out the noise, but it definitely muffles the sound. Our Library Things collection is a collection of items that maybe a patron just wants to try out before buying, or maybe it's something that they'll just need once, so they don't want to make an investment into purchasing the item. We recently expanded on our Library Things collection, so here's listed some of the new items. We have a bike repair kit, disc golf set, a food dehydrator, a karaoke machine, Nintendo Switch, an Oculus, a power washer, a violin, and much more. You can access through our website to reserve those items. Our Seed Lending Library, we started in 2023, where patrons have the opportunity to check out seeds from the Boydin Library and bring those home and plant them. We are now in our second year of the Seed Library, and it has been super-popular. Staff had a great idea to plant the seeds, some of the seeds, to promote the program. They had an idea to plant some of the seeds in containers and then put them on the ledge coming down the stairs from the children's department, and it was a great spot, because as you can see, they've really, you know, grew really well. We have 17 museum passes for patrons to check out, and that gains them either free or discounted admission to area museums and local attractions. We have Overdrive, and then they recently renamed it to Libby, which is very confusing since my name is Libby, but it's one of our largest collections of digital media, where patrons can check out eBooks, audiobooks, and videos. We also have online streaming services. So unlike Overdrive/Libby, where you have to place a hold if the digital title is not available, with Hoopla, everything is always available to check out. Patrons can check out up to five items per month and enjoy a variety of eBooks, audiobooks, museum, music CDs, movies, and TV shows. We also have Canopy, which is another video streaming platform dedicated to thoughtful and thought-provoking films, and Creative Bug, which I love because I'm not much of an artist, but watching these crafting tutorials online makes me feel like I can be an artist. It's tutorials that learn how to paint, knit, crochet, and much more. We introduced two new online resources to our patrons this fiscal year, Brainfuse, which offers live online tutoring to all learners in real-time assistance through online classrooms. Live tutors are available online between the hours of 2:00 and 11:00 PM. We also have Niche Academy, which delivers online simple-to-understand trainings on the e-resources that we already have at the Boydin Library, so Overdrive, Hoopla, Canopy, Creative Bug. It has simple tutorials on how to use those resources, as well as online trainings for other platforms like Facebook, or if you want to set up a Gmail account, or Microsoft, Excel, or something like that. We also now have Library Speakers Consortium. We used to get a lot of people that say they want author talks, but the author talks they want are like Stephen King, or, you know, Danielle, you know, they want like the really well-known authors to come to the library, and we can't afford to have two to three very well-known authors come every month. And so this was the solution when Library Speakers Consortium approached us. It allows patrons to enjoy a range of virtual author talks from bestselling authors and thought leaders each month. They schedule two to three a month for virtual author talks. You can register and watch the talk live, or if you miss it, you can go back and have the ability to watch the author talks on demand. Shown here are some of the upcoming author talks, but some of the author talks that the Speakers Library Consortium have hosted in the past are Ruth Ware, who writes suspense novels such as The Woman in Cabin 10, or bestselling author William Kent Krueger, who wrote This Tender Land, and we even had John Stamos, the actor who spoke on his memoir. Each month at the Boydin Library, we feature a local artist and exhibit their artwork in the community room. It's a great way to spruce up the walls in the community room while supporting local talent. Also, just recently, we started trying Padlet, which is an online platform to encourage themed community art online exhibits. May's theme was Something You Can't Live Without, and community members have been posting photos such as cheesecake, and books, and animals, and the beach. Our children's department started doing a new program called Little Librarian of the Week. The idea is that the Little Librarian of the Week gets to create a library book display in the children's room of their favorite titles, or they can create a themed book display. It's really up to whatever they want to do, and we've had so much interest in this. In 2023, our summer reading program was such a success. We had a total of 369 participants, and collectively, we had 171,308 total minutes read. Here are some of the photos to capture some of our amazing summer programs. We have in the top here, we have Around the Town Storytime, we have the Bubble Man, we had Live Reptile Show, Teddy Bear Picnic, where we had Philip Alexander Quartet Band perform, and also a shark biology program. Here are some programs listed by age group that we offer more on a regular basis. We have book discussion groups, craft nights, author talks, special lectures. We also have continued with our Sunday concerts, and we just started about a year ago, we started a writing group that's facilitated by a member of the community. Children's Department has storytimes, crafting workshops, preschool precursors, strange science, pause to read, we have a therapy, dog come in and children get to read to the dog. The coding club that I mentioned before, the Lego Club. For teens, we have Snackable Chats, which is completely led by the teens. It's sort of like a teen advisory board, but they make it just a little bit more fun. They create their own drinks and snacks that they want. We also have D&amp;D Dungeons &amp; Dragons, crafty teen sessions, and also special programs, and a whole host of a lot more, too, on our calendar. For 2024, our annual community read was held in March, and the book we picked was The Violin Conspiracy by Brendan Slocombe. We had a variety of programs throughout the month that centered around the same themes of the book. Some of these programs included a string quartet concert, a murder mystery event, book discussions, sessions, and children's musical-themed crafts. As you can see in the pictures, at the end of the month, we had Mr. Slocombe come to the Boydin Library to do an author talk and a book signing, and it was really well-attended. We also held a human library event at the library, and this event was a little confusing, so I'm going to try to sum it up for you guys, a little confusing to have the community understand, but I'm going to try to sum it up for you guys. The concept of this program was, we reached out to community members that have had experiences with prejudice and invited them to volunteer to be books at the event. Patrons or readers then attended this event to borrow time at the library with the human book. This event provided the opportunity to create a safe space for honest and open communication and conversations, and for attendees to listen, share, and ask questions of people that may never have spoken to them otherwise. Some of the book topics were neurodivergency, addiction, chronic pain, a rare allergy, adoption, and more. And although we didn't have as big of a turnout as we would have liked, it was really special seeing the people connect and have honest conversations and really learn from each Here are some other examples of programming for all ages that are offered at the Boydin Library. We had a Terracotta Relief Art Workshop for teens. We have regular sessions of drop-in tech help. We had a collectibles appraisal with Rick Keller. We have Zentangle once a month. In the children's department, we had a Skywalker scavenger hunt for May 4th, and we had a family author talk with Allison O'Leary. So we also have partnered with the Massachusetts Center for the Book on their 2024 Reading Challenge. Each month is a designated different theme, and the Mass Center for the Book recently released this graphic on the right of the 100 cities and towns with the highest number of participants in their 2024 Reading Challenge. And the bigger the word, the more participants they have. And we were proud to say, although it is a little smaller, Foxborough is on this list. So we're very pleased with that, that our patrons are participating in this. So just to finalize my last slide here, talk about some of the goals. Based on our community feedback from our new strategic plan, there were several evident themes that were highlighted, as you can see from the graphic here. The bigger words are Makerspace, and Programs, and Resources, and that really helped shape the goals that we included in our strategic plan. So some of the goals we have for FY '25, we really would like to establish a Makerspace and offer more science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, which makes the STEAM acronym, steam programming for all ages. We really want to continue to develop community partnerships and pursue collaborative programming opportunities. We want to enhance programming even more with creative and diverse ideas at the Boydin Library. And then this is a special passion of mine, but I really want to explore and research avenues so that we can acquire a bookmobile, because I really believe that, yes, we have the library building, but we really need to be out into the community and doing outreach and really involving all community members and getting them excited about the library. So that is it. Any questions?
Great.
Well done.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Not so much a question, as a comment. It's exciting to listen to you speak about the library.
Oh, thank you.
Because in your voice, I can hear excitement and, you know, what you've accomplished, also probably even more what you would like to accomplish.
Yes.
So more of a comment than anything. It was a great presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Sure. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah. Go ahead. Sorry.
There's a couple of things.
Sure.
A lot of people up here know I go to Maryland a lot with my granddaughters.
Yeah.
So I'm in libraries a lot.
Yeah.
You know, so I can compare what we're doing here to world-class libraries, five of them in Maryland. So do you have really good programming for toddlers and preschool?
We do.
Because we wouldn't live without those.
We have Storytime. It's changed a bit, but we have Storytime almost every day of the week for the little ones. Yeah. And then we have, one of our programs is Tippy Toe Time, which is sort of incorporating movement, and it used to be ballet, but I think it's evolved into a little bit of just more movement and dancing around. So.
And just before, Bill, just a shout-out, because I remember last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I use Canopy and Hoopla, and I don't know if other people have used them. Canopy in particular has a lot of movies you don't see on the regular streaming services, you know, so it's just another avenue. Obviously, it's free, but another avenue to really plug in and get some really good content.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, I'm happy to see the library growing. I've looked at what's happened on our school size, and quite honestly, we have very small book collections because everything's online.
Yep.
But many people like and enjoy having that, you know, solid book in their hand when they're reading and going through it, so I'm glad it's a thriving community right now, and very impressed, quite honestly, with some of the numbers of amount of people coming through there.
Thank you.
I know my family and my grandkids use it quite often, so I think it's a great resource to the town. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Deb, anything to add? Are you good? Good? Thank you, Libby.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Talk about town council proposals. Okay, so last week, Bill interviewed some firms for our new, if people don't know, our town council, Pat, will be retiring at the end of this fiscal year, and so we're starting that process to hire our next town council.
Yeah, so actually Paige, it was Paige and I that did it, and I guess.
What did I say?
You said Bill.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Paige, that's okay.
I don't know, Paige, do you want to kind of give your?
You want to go ahead, go ahead.
So as you know, and you have the proposals in front of you, there was four firms that put in proposals for this. It was interesting because we really were fortunate to have kind of a gamut of size firms, capabilities, and in going through the different interviews, I would say, one we felt wasn't as qualified as the other three, maybe in the way they approached the proposal and stuff, but it really came down, or comes down, to three candidates that are, two are similar in a lot of ways, similar-sized firms, similar capabilities as far as what they have for internal capabilities, and then one is a very large firm that represents more than half of the cities and towns in the state of Massachusetts. So you kind of have a choice here of how you feel you're going to fit with them. I have taken the opportunity to go through each one and listen to their interviews. I've also gone through and spoken to Pat Costello, just to get some kind of feelings with what I was feeling, to see, you know, how he would kind of also play off of it, and I believe Paige did the same. I think I have probably come to a conclusion, or I didn't think I was going to, as to which firm I would recommend going forward with, but I'm not going to give that until the board makes a decision as to how they want to approach forward, and obviously, you know, Paige may have a different opinion as well, so.
Yeah, as Bill said, we did meet with them, and it was quite interesting, and the bottom line is, all the candidates that submitted are qualified, you know, and they could all do the job. So then it comes down to what fits best for Foxborough, and I think, as Bill mentioned, one seemed less of a fit, so we're really, I think, had narrowed it down to three, and then that's going to be a matter of figuring out what this board wants to do. I am in the process, today I had the opportunity to speak to a couple town managers for references. Yesterday, Bill and I discussed that, so, you know, it's hard to get ahold of them sometimes, but generally, I've talked to a couple now. So, you know, we are doing our due diligence, and I think the question is going to be, you know, how this board wants to move forward with the next steps. You know, do you want to bring in three, and I don't know, Bill and I haven't had a chance today to speak, so, you know, do you want to bring the three candidates in and talk to them? Do you want us to call down to one or two, or sort of how the board? And Bill, what were you thinking in light of speaking with Pat?
I think.
What do you recommend?
Yeah, I really do think, you know, the board can make a decision as far as, but I'm going to just say that, I mean, we spent an hour with each one of them going through the process. We could do the same here as a board, if you so choose to, but I think if the, you know, board would like, I think we could probably give, you know, maybe our ideas on where it's going, and if you would, at that point, still want to go and interview the three, you know, recommendations, that's fine. If you'd like us to give you our, kind of our feelings now, we could do that, too, but I think it's really, you know, again, we've been, we're fortunate enough to have gone through it, so we kind of understand what we've seen. I think, you know, I do think that, you know, again, looking at the personalities and the capabilities, one of the nice things about all three of them, quite honestly, is, as you know, with Pat, he didn't have a labor side. as you know, with Pat, he didn't have a labor side. All three of these do also have that component. So now, while we do have current labor council outside that, you know, is very capable, is doing a great job, that's not the issue. But, you know, you can have some efficiencies and benefit of having a single firm being able to talk to itself internally. Because right now, Pat talks to Jamie, and it goes back and forth if there's issues. So there is some, some value there too. But it's, again, our board has the ability to say, we stay as is, and we just hire a council to, you know, do our municipal law stuff, or we do a combination. All three of these can do the combination. So that is not an issue in the end. The two smaller firms are 16 and 15 lawyers, so they're not small. I mean, they're still very capable, and they have the different disciplines with different attorneys internally. So, you know, there might be a couple that are labor specialists, or a couple of, you know, municipal law specialists. There might be somebody that's, you know, involved with another area. So I think, you know, we're not going to go bad there. I will, I guess, I will tell you, you know, in this, I didn't think I was going to get to this point, but I do believe that potentially, looking at the two smaller ones there, Foxborough won't get lost. I don't think KP, which is the larger of the two, would, you know, intentionally do anything that, not to give us as much attention as we would like. But I think, again, when you're representing half the state, even though they have a lot of attorneys to do it, you're going to be talking to a different attorney on a regular basis. Where I believe the two smaller ones would be more custom to our needs, more relatable, if you will. And, and obviously, I think they will also be more connected to us. By necessity, they don't have a lot of options to put other people into the play. So you might end up with two or three with a smaller firm that you're normally talking to on a regular basis, which I think is reasonable.
Well, for me, obviously, this isn't, I don't have any experience in this. So obviously, that's why I figured, you know, Bill would join Paige because he's done this before for municipal. I know Dennis has.
I went through all the proposals.
Has, has been.
I know we're going to go into depth.
Yeah. But I mean, so, so why don't, why don't we, if you would like to share some of your thoughts? I kind of feel that between Paige, yourself, and maybe Dennis with a little more experience, obviously, well, with more experience, I should say, a little more, more experience than Deborah, Deborah Rye. And I'm not really sure if even Doc has had that experience. I feel like, for me, the three of you would be the screening part of it. You know, I mean, do you think it would be safe to try to narrow down to two? And go from there? Or do you, do you think maybe the three, you know?
Well, I think, I think we could, obviously, we can do anything you want. But if we do do that, then, and, and your interest is bringing it back in front of the whole board, then I would bring, it would be, I think it'd be much more manageable to bring two back.
Yeah.
And have us interview.
I was going to say, Dennis, would you like to, would you like to share some comments also now? Or?
Not now, no.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, so I mean.
I mean, a general thing that I was, well, there's a lot of things I was looking for. But the, number one, Brandon did a great job, you know, with the RFQ. So it really allows you to sort of, you know, look at things quantitatively as well as qualitatively, so that was really a good thing. It was only one or two firms that had experience with pilots, significant experience with pilots. And I think we're going to have issues with pilots, the pilot, the big pilot, you know, going forward. So that's, that's a skill.
And honestly, I thought about, that was probably one of the things that was driving me, Paige will attest to, was driving me the most in looking at them. And again, that's kind of why I reached out to Pat to have a conversation with him. But again, remembering that the lease doesn't renew until 2037, which is many years out.
I won't be on the board any.
Yeah, I'm not sure anyone's going to be. But the other, the other side of that is that, you know, and this is one thing that I've always been a proponent of. And when, you know, Pat Costello originally came to town, it was because he had a specialty in construction. We had a construction issue that was significant. And town council really wasn't well-versed in, in that side of it. So it made a lot of sense to get a specialist. I think, you know, potentially, if we were ever to get into a major issue or when you're renegotiating the lease, the reality is you're going to find a specialty firm that deals with that on a high-end level on a regular basis. You're not going to worry about hiring current council that would do that. Because it's not, they're not going to be doing it day in and day out. They're going to be interpreting the lease, obviously, there's no doubt about that. And they're going to defend our side of how we feel the lease goes. But I think there are, in, in the two smaller firms, there are highly qualified people that can do that as well. So I get your point. Trust me, I was there 100%.
Right.
But, you know, thinking it more and more, it really came down to, you know, when you need to do that.
Right, right.
You have options.
Right, exactly.
Okay. So back around to what the game plan is. I mean, I, I think if you guys.
Well, I think where some of you haven't even seen the proposals. I think we should basically, I mean, we have a little time. Not till, till I first. But I think, you know, if, if we have everybody look at them, and the only thing I would say would be good is if, after you review them, unless we're going to make the decision right now on bringing somebody in, because I don't want to delay this meeting after meeting after meeting. Because it would take, you know, we'd be really pushing ourselves there. You know? Or do we want to just say now that we're going to interview two or three? And once you've reviewed them, you could tell Paige what your, you know, preferences are, and then we can just go from there.
Make that plan. Yeah, I do too, to show.
I like to. I, I think, I think it wouldn't be difficult to get down to two, based on my first, first read of these.
Okay, so why don't we?
We agree on the big one.
Yeah, well, the big one, everybody knows who it is.
Yeah. Okay. So do we, do we need to, we don't need to vote on that? Do we just, or do we? No, we just need to say.
Just say it's to be in the agenda by the next meeting to review at that point.
Okay. Do you want to, so at the next meeting, do you want them to come in? Or do we want to just talk about it?
Well, no, I think what we're, I think, are we saying that we're going to interview a couple?
Yes.
Between two and three? So, but they'll.
We'll wait and see which.
Until everybody says what their opinions are, then we'll decide which two or three.
Okay. Well, in.
That way, we can kind of make a decision.
And that would also maybe.
So it's going to be a vote night, sorry.
Yeah, Doc a little chance to, to take a peek at these two. You know, and see if he has any, you know, I mean, it'd be nice if we all kind of zero in on the same, same. But, you know, that'll just give us a little time too for Doc to be able to take a look at that. Okay.
Should we all do like a rank order, just a basic rank order?
We could.
I mean, for three, and eliminate the one that I think we agree on.
Yeah, absolutely, we could do that. So we'll just, so we'll say that on the next agenda, we will narrow down and then invite who we'd like to see to come in to, to meet with them. Okay.
Sounds like a good plan.
So we'll meet with them at the next meeting?
No.
No.
Well. Sounds like that's when you'll decide. Right, next meeting, we'll decide who?
Okay. Both the following meetings, so we have two meetings in June to?
Yeah, so it's going to be very tight. You might want to have, I mean, I hate to say this, you might need a special meeting.
I forgot to tie for this right there.
You might need a special meeting for these interviews. Especially if you're doing three. I mean, to get three or two hours into a regular meeting is going to be very challenging. Yeah. So, so what about if, next meeting, we, we decide who?
Yeah.
And then we'll, we'll go into.
To a special.
Yeah, we'll go into a, we'll pick a day for a special meeting, and then we'll actually do that?
Yep.
That's good, okay. Everyone good with that?
Yep.
All right. All right, sounds good. Bill and Paige, thank you so much for, for doing the hard part. It's, it's getting, narrowing down for us. All right, let's see. Okay, all right. Oh, memorial benches.
Yeah, fun topic.
Yeah. Okay, so, so we've got 21 benches on the common. So that's where we are right now. We're hitting that first, right?
Yes, so in your board docs.
Yep, 15.
You have your applications.
Yep.
And as you know, the select board is, reviews the locations and, and the benches for all. I did, Chris was kind enough, only because we didn't know if anything would come up. If you start looking at the requests, there's some that get specific. So rather than us all saying, well, which ones? We, Chris numbered them, which is very kind of him to do for us. So we could, as we're discussing. In case you end up choosing a specific location, I want to make sure we're very clear on where.
So tonight, we're going to look at these, approve and assign?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to get it done.
You know, so there's a little, little more than I, like, I was kind of like looking. I said, okay, well, there's 21, and there's only 15. But I, and you know something? When I first started reading it yesterday, I was kind of like, I was like, oh, my God, everybody wants to be on the common. And then as I went on to look at the map, I was like, oh, good, there's 21 on the common. I forgot about the 21. And I was like, how are we getting everybody on the common? So, yeah, there are some of them that are pretty specific where they'd like to be, and so.
Yes.
Sure. So would, so you think the best way for us is just to start with the first application?
And? Sure, so, I mean, it's, I think we can go through them pretty quickly.
Yeah.
If you open the file that does have the applications. The first couple are from the Disability Commission. And these are actually not going to be on the common. There's two on Central Street and one over by the steamer shed. And I believe these might be the backless ones, but I'm not, I, now, it's been so long we've been talking about it, I forget. But I think they have to be backless, especially on Central Street, because they need to go up against the building, and the, the back would make them sit out too far. So those would be backless. And so that's for the three. On, one's in front of Foxborough Nutrition, one's in front of Subway, and then one's over by the steamer shed. Those are those. They've waited a long time for those. The next one is for Chet Harrington. And that, you'll see the message there in Loving Memory. And their first request, their first request was the Booth Field. And the Recreation Board is okay with that. So the, so just for backup, for anybody who doesn't remember, this is our first time going through it. If it's on land that's controlled by another agency, like Recreation or Conservation, then the process is they get to kind of look at it first and determine whether they're okay with the proposed location. Recreation was okay, so they let us know it's okay. So now I would suggest that it be okay to have this placed on the Booth Field. That would be a different one. That would not be the, the metal wrought iron. That is more of the recycled plastic one, so you know. Then we have another one in memory of Bob Lomas, and he would like one on the common. He did not specify where, so I think that could go anywhere. The Winslow's, I will say, the Winslow's were at our door, our office, the morning after we first talked about benches. They were so anxious to get their parents a bench. So they would like one on the common. Again, they didn't specify a location. Then we have Jay Barrows, and he's looking to memorialize Janice Barrows. And he also specified just on the common. And then now here, we get to specific. These folks are looking to be on the town common near the library. So then if we look at the map.
Number eight would be the closest.
So, I mean, number eight-ish, is that?
Yeah.
Everybody good with number eight for that, this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, then we have the Athletes. And this is two separate benches, Jack and Marge. They would like two benches adjacent or across from one another by the flagpole on the Baker Street end or on the Memorial Hall end. That's the third choice. So they'd like to be by the flagpole first, so.
Really nothing across from each other.
I know. 11 and 12-ish? I mean, I don't know if those are close enough.
Yeah, it's almost like one, one and two are similar, if you want to stay near the flagpole. What about, oh, well, so they want to be more, more to the right. I was going to say four and five are a little bit across from each other, or 17 or 18. But the ones that are almost right, not, nothing's directly across from each other, but the ones that are similar, that are close and across, don't hit the other, don't hit the other criteria, do they?
Yeah, the number one seemed to be the flagpole. So flagpole was first choice, second choice is Baker Street, third choice is Memorial Hall.
19 and 20 to Memorial Hall are probably the two that are the closest to being across from each other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It seems to be fitting too.
Yeah, it does overlook in Memorial Hall. Okay, then we're on to Mr. Beck, who's also waited quite patiently. Prefer a new bench, seeking a location facing the current citizens' bank. So would that be like 13? I mean, that's facing.
Yeah, 13 is facing.
Mr. Beck, you good with 13? You don't, you don't know where 13 is.
He's just waving like, I trust you guys.
Okay, and then, let's see. Then we have another one from Mr. Beck, he's busy. Same location.
15.
Okay, well, we can't have, so 13?
13 and 15.
15, okay. 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 And then we have Rosemary, and Bill and Rosemary Buckley to memorialize. And let's see, they just said somewhere in the center of the common. Well, they have Bay Colony, so perhaps they could be somewhere over, you know, maybe number one or two, something like that, kind of on the Bay Colony side, but.
Looks good.
Yeah.
Any preference?
Yeah, I think it was, I would say maybe one or 21.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever. Like, because Bay Colony would be.
Well, they said near the center, so that's why.
Oh, okay, all right, yep.
Two of them.
Oh.
Two?
Yeah.
Would you two?
Okay, we're good.
Okay, now we have the Foxborough Lions. They just want to be on the common, so I think we could, no need to choose. And then we have Frank Forton, also on the common, no specific. So those are, so those are the specific locations. Now, the other question that I want to raise, having just looked at the policy again, is if you recall, or I don't know if Deb and Bill even know about this, but there are two different categories of benches on the common. One is perpetual and one is general. So that's because, for example, when we started to evaluate the common now, there were some, like, I can only remember Doc's expression when he was like, "Vince Igoe, we can't get rid of Vince Igoe." So it was kind of that, you know, like, what do we do about those that are already out there? And so I don't know a lot of these individuals or any of them, except I know the Athletes. So I just, I'm raising that as whether you consider Jack Athlet and/or his wife as perpetual category forever, or you want, so the difference is, is you have to renew after 10 years if you're not perpetual. If you're perpetual, you stay basically until the town or the select board decides you're gone. So that's a, that's a, that's a decision of the board, really, to determine whether, what's warrants perpetual.
So are there any?
Cemetery.
Yeah, are there any current ones that are perpetual?
Well, we're putting back Igoe, and I can't remember, there were a couple, Well, we're putting back Igoe, and I can't remember, there were a couple, there were like, the, the five or six that are out there, we're keeping. And I don't know that they're going to be forever perpetual, because we didn't designate them that, but it was sort of an effort. So I think, you know, an Igoe would be perpetual. For some reason, Athlet to me, maybe only because I've lived in this period, and, you know, Jack obviously played such an extraordinary role in this town. So that, to me, rose to that, but I've only been here eight years, so I can't really speak to the full depth of Foxborough history. Or, we could just, you can make that decision later. But that are two separate categories, and it will affect whether they have to renew in 10 years, at which time probably none of you will be here, but maybe you will be.
I guess the question I really have is, at some point, you're gonna have to replace them. So, if they're all end up being perpetual, then the town is just gonna replace them and have to move the plaques over and, and that's it. And, so that's the end of the story. But, and I'm not saying that's wrong, but it's kind of.
Well, I think it is meant to be sparing, you know, like, I mean, I don't think every one of these, again, I'm speaking out of turn.
But everybody that says submitted one will think that they're perpetual status, and that's, that's.
Well, we do have some language on that. Let me just see what it says here.
Yeah.
I have it, I have it right here. Perpetual memorial benches designated for individuals or organizations with recognized and well-documented significance in Foxborough's community history, justifying long-term approval and only removed with a majority vote from the Select Board.
And so which ones are you gonna say aren't, meet that criteria?
I already went out on the limb, and I thought the Athletes, you know, I'm not saying who doesn't, I'm just thinking the, they do.
Well, that's helpful, Paige, but.
Yeah. But. Yeah, well, I mean, it, I mean, it's tough. I, I mean, I, I guess when, when we, these are the ones we're looking at now. I, you know, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this with prejudice, because, um, you know, Jimmy's family was very close with the Buckleys, but I look at something like that and say, well, okay, he's got, you know, a son who's.
That's true.
Assistant chief, and, and their business is here, they, you know, but, you know, that's maybe because I know them, and I know some of the history. Some of these people, I don't know the history. Do, is there, I don't know, is there any way that we include somebody to, if they want to request it to be perpetual, and tell us why? Does that make any sense? Or, or do we just do the history ourselves?
Well, I mean, some of them, they, they, a lot of them did write sort of their narrative.
Yeah.
I don't know if they'd have much more, um, to offer.
Oh, yeah, because they're already kind of telling us why they should be considered for the bench, right?
Because it says, please describe how the person being memorialized was a resident of or contributed in a meaningful way to Foxborough for periods of ten years. So, you know, they did talk about, you know, Bill and Rosemary moving to Foxborough. Yeah, it's, it's a tough, uh, call. I didn't even think of them. But, I mean, Athlet was like the no-brainer one that jumped out at me, but you're right. And, and that's the name I know, but I don't know a lot of these names. So, to your point, I can't say.
Yeah, and I would even say organizations, and I'm not a Lions member, but, like, I know the Lions Club has done a lot in Foxborough, so it's like, you know.
Right, but then again, they, now they're not buying a bench in 10 years, yeah, so it's.
Right.
Do we have to do it?
You don't have to make any perpetual. You could just do benches and not make a perpetual, you could just prove the benches.
I, I think that's probably the right, the way we should go, and quite honestly, somewhere down the future, when it comes back up again, the, the people can make the decision as to how they want to handle the replacement. They may just decide that the town will just pay for new plaques and put new things on, keep the exact same ones that were out there. I mean, I.
Makes perfect sense.
You know. I, I don't think when you advertise this, you were, you made any kind of a commentary of that, you know, this is gonna be forever, or it was just, because typically, when someone buys something like this, they know there's a life to it.
Yes.
It's not never-ending. I mean, I, but I, you know, I think.
Unfortunately, we weren't sure when we did research, we did a lot of research on the current benches and could not find anything that revealed whether, what the promise was or what wasn't. But to your point, we don't expect that anyone assumes that, but the way, we weren't sure. So we were a little hesitant to rip plaques off, throw them away.
Yeah. No, I agree.
Yeah, I, I, I think I agree with Bill, because I think it's, it's gonna get very sketchy to, to try to, and like Deb said, who, who here is not gonna say that, you know? I mean, there, there's a reason why they've, they've come forward to this, so they're all gonna feel like, they're all gonna feel like that they're, they're, they're special. And, and I, I mean, listen, there are some that we could probably sit here and no-brainer say, and, you know, Jack might be one of them, but how, how do we, you know, how do we say that over somebody else? I mean, I, I don't.
No, I think your, Bill, is a great idea, because I think in 10 years or so, then when this is coming up, comes up again, that's when will, the, that board will know who is significant, you know, because if none of these people, or, who's that? Then it might be like, well, no, but if they somehow carried on, so it, it kind of almost makes sense that you'd wait a period to see.
And the other side is, these benches are very well-built. So, other than maintaining, repainting them at some point in time down the road, these things could last 25 years, for crying out loud. So it's like, making that kind of a determination now, you know, really, I, I don't see.
Well, it, I mean, what I'm gonna say, then, I'm thinking maybe I'm just muddying it a little bit more, is, is there any way, or do we want to give other people an opportunity? You know, at some point, we're gonna fill the benches. And may, and maybe, maybe there, there's somewhere down the road, there's some other areas in town that we might be able to put more memorial benches? So we might be able to grow that number, but I don't know right now, we know that. But is there anything about if someone already has a bench, when the time comes?
Yes, so actually, we do talk about that.
Yeah. Do we have that? They have the first opportunity to renew, or no?
Yes, so it says, upon expiration of the 10-year period, applicants may have the option to renew the memorial bench at the current price. In the event the town, the town is unable to reach the donor through contact information on record, the right to renew is not guaranteed, donors have 30 days, blah, blah. So yes, they have a right. So after 10 years, it may be that they're asked to renew. And even if the bench is in great condition, it might be, and again, it depends on what the appetite is at that time. I mean, obviously, those benches out on the common have been in tough shape for a while. We're just finally getting to them. Who knows, you know, in 20 years, what will be going on there, so.
Is there a different donation for the perpetual and the 10-year?
No.
And you, you know what, and I also feel like, listen, we'll come out and say this. It, it's not about getting more money from you, because, like I said, the benches, you know, like Bill said, they, they could last a long time. But I think that's the only fair way to, just to, so if a family wants it to be there forever, every 10 years, or if we change the policy at some point, if it's a different number than 10, I think we'll probably stay with 10. Then, yeah, so that they can, they can just, they can continue it.
That's fair.
And you know what? And I also think there's families, let's put it this way, it, you know, um, i- if I were to want a bench for someone, I think my children would be aware of it, and then so.
They'd take care of it.
Yeah, and you know, and you just say, hey, listen, you know, just remember, in 10 years, grandpa's bench may, you know, we have to renew it. And, and if you want to carry that, that, you know, on for your family, that tradition, then, then they do. And they have first, first to do it. I think it'd be really hard to decide who, you know. There's so many good, you know, I, I could sit here right now and look at that list, and I'm like, oh, that's a good one, that's a pretty good one, but then what happens if, if we get others as we go along?
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot, it's a lot to.
Okay, so we'll do general?
Yeah.
I like that. As, as proposed here with the, and we talked about the locations, right here.
So the five that, um, names exist, are they already counted for as to where they'd be replaced?
Well, yeah, they're going to be replaced in place, like, they're, they're not on this list right now, but they're counted for.
So they're part of the 21, though?
Yeah, we, we're part of that 21, yes.
So what do we technically have left, if you?
Well, if you notice, a couple of them are, are off-site, so we're still right around, I think it was around, should have been around 15? Yeah.
So tonight, we just had to pick seven, seven, four location? Did I count that right? We didn't forget anybody, did we?
One, two, three, four, five, six. Two Athletes, and one, two, three, four others.
One, two, three, four, five, six. I get seven.
Hmm, what do you have? I have number eight.
Did we do 18?
I didn't have an 18. Oh, what's 18? Do you know?
Did I make, I made a little dot on that one? Oh, maybe I didn't, maybe that's just on the paper.
No, we didn't do 18.
Okay, that's, maybe I just dotted the wrong one. Okay, all right.
I have eight, 19, 20, 13, 15, and two.
Okay, perfect. Actually, I don't think I made that dot. I think that's the corner of, um, just on the paper, it's not on the little where the benches. Okay, perfect. All right. The other ones, and then, it's, so, and as these come in, we'll just continue this process?
They'll come in.
Yep.
They'll come into this board, and you'll approve them if they come in.
Fabulous.
Okay.
You want a motion?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we have to actually make a vote.
Yep. Deb, you have.
Motion to accept the 15 memorial bench applications.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? I agree, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so now we're to our boards, board committee, commission, and groups, okay. So tonight, we're, we're gonna be doing some, um, looking over some of the policies. And we're also going to be doing the reappointments. So first, we have to clean up some of the policies, so we, uh, okay. Okay, duh, 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 duh. Okay, so, um, first off, we have to select a member of the board to serve on, uh, we need for the Audit Committee, Capital Improvement, Planning Committee, Town Asset Review, and um, the, uh, Economic Development. So, I'm gonna go out on a limb here and nominate Dennis to stay on the Audit Committee.
Good. Good, good limb.
All those in favor? Oh, wait, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. I had a, I, should I just go? I had a couple of ideas, you know, and if anybody isn't interested, then you can just say, I just, as I was looking and I was thinking, who might fit into some of these? Um, I'm gonna skip and go to Economic Development. Um, Deb, I, I thought, I thought myself or yourself would, um, would be good, so I, I would like to nominate you to, um, be our representative for Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor? I, all right, I did have one more. Um, same, same thing, either, either myself or, um, Bill. I mean, you, you've served on CIP for a long time for the schools. You're very familiar. If for some reason you weren't interested, I, I would do it, but I, I kind of feel that you're probably.
Yeah.
Was there anything else there that you were interested in?
No, actually, that would be the one that I was most interested in.
Okay, so, all right, so, um, I'd like to nominate Bill, make a motion to nominate Bill to, um, be our rep for CIP.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just, um, I, I think my term ends anyway, on, on CIP.
Oh, I'm s- you know something? I forgot you were on, I forgot you were on CIP.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, you, you're good with Bill taking over?
No, I'm good.
Perfect, okay. Sorry about that, Dennis, I, I completely forgot. Um, you know, because we, at one point, we, it used to be the chair, they used to always make it be the chair, and I think someone decided it didn't have, it didn't have to be the chair. And I think in my head, I was thinking, it was Doc, but no, you, you're absolutely right. Okay, great, sorry, I forgot that. All right, so we have Bill. All right, so, uh, we have, so, is all we have left is the Town Asset Review?
Yes.
All right. Um, I'm gonna just, just show my ignorance to this and say, what is that committee? I don't, I don't know that one.
So that committee, we, for example, met to talk about the Pratt School, any property that the town's trying to decide, well, I don't know actually whether it's all properties, but from, the way I've worked with it, it's always properties the town's seeking to dispose of, or just trying to figure out what to do with. For example, the Pratt School, the Auditorium. I don't know if the fire station went through that the first time around, that was before my time, the old fire station, but I believe that's what it is, so.
And was Seth, was Seth our rep?
He was.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, listen, I'm gonna, while he's not here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna nominate Doc for that, for that, for that committee.
I'll teach him.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor? Aye.
I'll second.
Okay, listen, if for some reason Doc doesn't really want to, I, I, I don't know much about it, but if Doc doesn't want to, I would.
We've met like three times in like eight years, so.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. You know, I did all the nominating and did not nominate myself or anything.
I did, I wrote your name next to Town Asset, I forgot about poor Doc. And then I'm like, oh, yeah, Doc.
You figure that would be, we'd be, listen, if for some reason, when Doc gets back, if he really doesn't want to do it, I, I would be happy to do it. So, okay, all right. Wow, look at that, I took over right for that, and just told everybody what they were gonna do, didn't I? Okay, um.
Don't get used to it.
Okay, so, all right, so now we need to, uh, talk about Economic Development and um, their, um, the, the, the numbers. So, Katie, do, just because you, you can probably explain that a little bit better, I know we're, we're switching numbers, so can I turn to you for a second for that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, perfect.
So the Economic Development Committee does have nine voting members with their three non-voting liaisons, um, and then the town manager is also an ex officio to that committee. I think it was just a few years ago, the board had seven individuals with three applications, and at the time, they just said yes to those three applications to make their voting number 10. But just from, um, research, they just found it was hard to get a quorum with 10. So now with the board, with the committee losing a few numbers, there, we're just looking to make sure that we can reconfirm the nine with the three non-voting liaisons to just give it a fresh start.
Sure, and, and, you know, I know when we were doing the agenda, like, Bill mentioned, like, the odd number is better anyhow.
Absolutely. Ten was awful.
Voting purposes, purposes. And, and I get it, now that you have nine, you don't want to drop anybody. Probably, seven would probably be a better number, but you're not, you don't want to turn anybody away, so. Okay, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, what's the real charter of this committee? What do they?
Oh, well, I happen to have that right here. It's not much. Um. I need glasses. Highly technical. From seven members to nine, and then over here, let's see if this is where it was created. Here we go, that's where it started. So it never really got any firm, these are just minutes from the Select Board meeting back in March of 2000, where the members were just talking about an Economic Development Committee and creating it. So this is the only, Bob Cutler provided this to me as sort of the impetus behind it.
How often do they meet? I mean, it doesn't seem like there's much meet there for them to.
Well, I, I'll get down the microphone. I could say that when I first started, um, the EDC met twice a month. And so for the first couple of years, we were meeting all the time. Um, and then, we started doing once a month. And then it sort of got to the point where really, I mean, I was doing most of the work anyway, so it was like, I, we didn't need a meeting to talk about what I was gonna do. So we just sort of fizzled out, COVID came, and, you know, we did our big zoning on Route One, we did a lot of things, so right now, it's been paused. So I'm looking for Catherine, our new planner, to come in and re-energize it. I know the group really wants to get re-energized, so I think they'll pick up and, and get active again. But it had sort of stagnated a bit. And I know we've had, have we had new, we have some application, do we get new applications or no?
We do, Amy LaBrash had submitted an application, so she is on your, um, appointment list, but then since then, I've had one more come in, so I sent that over to the entire board today.
Do they end up coming back to us, making recommendations on different things? Or...
Well, they did, so the EDC was responsible for the, the rezoning of Route 1. You know, that was our initiative way back in, what, 2017, 2018? So that did end up, you know, obviously in front of town meeting in AdCom. But that was a really big one. Uh, those are few and far between. Typically, you're not gonna see as much, but who knows what Catherine will bring to the table.
Okay.
And also, am I mixing up the two where, um, was it, um, EDC or was it the Business Collaborative that did like the, the little signs that we had uptown?
That's the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative, yes.
I was mixing up the two. I was, I would just remember, I think it seemed at the same time, there was just a lot, a lot going on.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, reconfirm of the Economic Development Committee membership. Nine voting members plus three non-voting liaisons. One from the Planning Board, one from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and one from the Select Board.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, so this is a little, a little cleanup for us too. Um, Katie, Katie did a lot of work on this.
She did.
So in the board, we, we have a, a couple of decisions tonight. Um, I'm just gonna scroll down to the first highlight. Okay, um... Okay, so this is about the chairmanship. All right, so make sure, I want to make sure I word this right. Steph? So this is...
I just wanna, yep. Um, I don't believe you voted on Bill being on the CIP.
Oh, okay.
I second it.
I thought, I thought we did, but we'll, 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 just in case, we'll redo it. Okay. All right, so I make a motion for Bill to be the, um, the Board of Selectmen, uh, rep on CIP.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. You're official now, one way or the other. Okay, did we just catch that?
I'm not, I'm not revealing my sources.
Oh, okay, okay. No, I was gonna say, good job, Mr. Beck, we want to get, we want to get it right.
He gets it, if he gets credit, then yes.
Ah, okay, we're just gonna say it was him. All right, so, okay, so, this, so this is talking about swapping up, so we don't always have the same chair. So, what, okay, I'm, I'm kind of wondering that, um, what ends up happening sometime? I, I always think it's nice to swap things up, but sometimes, um, you know, certain committees or boards might operate well with, with the same chair. So... So basically, what's in front of us is, do we want to change this, Katie? To, to not necessarily say that they have to swap? So I have this right, okay?
Yep.
So does it, so, I'm okay with changing it, because I, as, as much as I think it's, it's great to have a little change, I kind of feel like certain committees would like to stay with their. And, um, so do you, do you have to abstain from, from this, or? Because you are reserving on one, and you are the chair?
Yeah.
Okay.
But this accommodates keeping the same chair with a majority vote.
Did I read it backwards? Did I read it backwards, Katie? We're, they're okay?
A majority of the board, a majority, a majority of the board's members votes to the contrary. So that means the board, majority could say, we want to keep our chair.
Okay, so, so we're okay with keeping this as is?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was reading it backwards, I was, I was going backwards.
So basically, what you're saying is you're encouraging reorganization with different chairs, but you're not mandating it.
Okay, perfect. So basically, we, do we need to make a motion to keep as is, or because we're not changing it, we can...
No, it's gonna be one motion.
Yeah, let me set the stage. This policy doesn't exist today. Um, we found this policy, and it's a good poli-, like, we came across it in our files, and we're like, oh, look at this policy. And then we started researching and realizing that it never had been adopted. So we don't know where exactly it came from, but it was in the files under policies. So we took, Katie took a good look at it and started to retro, you know, and highlight where might be some questions. So that's just, so just to be clear, none of this exists as a policy. You'd be approving this policy, but Katie went ahead and highlighted some of the areas based on conversations that might be focus areas for this board to decide. But the whole policy is open for discussion.
Right, so...
Oh, okay.
So we have a couple options. We either don't even vote a policy in, we vote a policy in, and we amend it, or whatever.
Okay, so, so we want to talk about the, 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 the three that we may want to talk about first, kind of get a feel for that, and then we'll take a vote to accept the policy?
Right.
Okay.
Or not.
Or not, or not. Absolutely. Okay. Okay, and so the second one, and we cut, we, we, we talked about this at the last meeting, 'cause we knew this was coming up, and Katie was giving us, um, a heads up on, um, getting, getting all the reappointments. So this policy says, if we adopt it as is, says that you're only allowed to sit on one appointed order committee. We started to have some discussion about it. I think Bill talked about maybe making it two, because we didn't want to have, you know, we didn't want to kick people off that are already sitting on these and, and doing great jobs. And we thought two was a, um, was a, a, a good number instead of, and, and the, and Doc did say one thing that, um, that I thought about a little bit afterwards, about, you know, um, having a, a ghost spot. And so if somebody was already on two and they want to stay on a third, that we might let them until. I was thinking about that a little bit, and, uh, the only thing I'm afraid of is that people won't, may not apply, 'cause they don't want to kick somebody off. So I, for one, don't think we should, I, I think we should vote what we think is a good number and keep that. That's my opinion. So, um, Dennis, Deb, Doc, what, you know, what do, what do you guys think? [laughing] Doc? Oh my God! [laughing]
He's not, he's not...
I just said Doc.
You're saying two is the number?
Doc, Deb, it was D, I had the D right.
I'm fine with two.
Yeah.
I'm fine with two.
Yeah.
Me too's good.
The other side of this is, just so that you're, we're clear on it, is that if we adopt the two that you just said, if somebody is, um, a member of a committee, so let's say you were, you're unelected, just like we just did, were elected to a certain thing, but were requested, one of us has to be on one of those committees. So that means somebody could technically have been elected to a position and be the official person to represent that, which would not be one of the two.
Right, right. I read that somewhere in some of the bylaws.
So potentially, they could be on three, or, or more in that sense. But, um, so while I don't think one is the right number, I, I would be willing to go with the two that the rest of you are, are saying.
Okay, sure. Paul?
Thank you for recognizing me to...
Of course. We'll nod to him, Deb.
I've served on a handful of committees, and, uh, my experience has been that, uh, it's not easy to get people to serve on committees. I know I recently got off a committee a couple of years ago, and I was hounded by people on that committee to come back, you know, and so I did. So I do think that, uh, just the normal wear and tear of how much time a person has. You know, if people, if the, if the chair of the committee, uh, is dissatisfied with somebody by non-attendance or coming and never saying anything, uh, you know, they could pass that on to, to you, you know, or, or to Paige, and, and take care of that. But you got, you know, uh, I, I just think that a low number's not good. You know, uh, I don't know, I don't know what the overall shortfall of people on committees is now, but, uh, you know, I, I just think that, you know, gotta be careful on putting limits, because it's not easy to get people.
Yeah. Oh, I was gonna ask, were you gonna ask Katie the same question, just about the breakdown, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Katie, I know you have, I have that, you have that number. How many people are, right now, more than two?
Right now, there are 12 people that are more, I'm sorry, there are 11 people on two and one person that exceeds two.
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, we all have...
How many open, how many open?
Positions?
Positions do we have?
We have...
And I think in fairness, when we ask the question, have they been advertised recently so that people would know that they're available?
Yes, we did a large advertisement on, I think it was, um, the eighth of this month, to give like a two-week period for applications to come in. Um, there was one on cable TV, a couple on the, or the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee. They had open seats, as well as the Foxborough Cleanup Committee, um, Council on Aging and Human slash Human Services Advisory Commission. They have two open seats, they got four applications. Um, the, um, EDC, they have, um, four open slots, they had one application. Um, and then it was just, um, two, three on Historical, one on, two on Veteran Services Advisory Board, and then the Zoning Board of Appeals did have, um, two applications come in. So I thought it was actually a larger response than maybe we all anticipated.
Yeah. Wait a minute, um, excuse me. Um, so to Paul's point, we're going from one to two. That's a significant increase, going from one to two.
Well, but the policy doesn't exist today.
Right, it was never enforced.
Well, this is not, this is not a policy as it exists today.
No, but if we approve this, does it become...
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah. Well, right now, there's no limit, so you go from unlimited to two.
Two.
Yeah. So whoever, because you said it was very hard, so whoever drafted this policy, whether, whether an existing board had seen it, they, they were saying one. So, and I think that was the discussion last meeting, was that we didn't want a limit to one. So we thought going up to two. So we're, there's only 11 people with more than two.
No.
No.
More than one.
Eleven with more than one.
Oh, 11 more than one, okay.
Yeah.
Do we, do we know how many more than two?
Just one.
One.
Just one, okay, all right. Yeah, so, so if we change it right now, it's only, we're really only having one person for, to be less...
And I want to clarify too, that, um, an elected board wouldn't fall under this. So that doesn't count as, just to be clear.
Yeah. Paul?
On this, on this topic, and I'm not sure if, wait, I have a second, second item. Over 10 years ago, uh, I was one of four citizens, um, that volunteered to serve on a particular committee. And two dropped out, and two of us were interviewed by this board, by the, the board at that time. You know, uh, so I do think it's, it's important that the board, you know, you know, get a, a good diversity of experience and, and, and other demographics for the various boards, you know, to, uh, you know... A lot of those committees are really critical, and, and you guys are the ones that the citizens appoint, you know, to make that, and I think you should keep that in your wheelhouse. The other thing, uh, I know, uh, is the moderator still appoint to the AdCom?
He does.
Yes.
All right, I served on the AdCom, I think there was 15 of us. There's only seven now, and I, I've been noticing that a while. I know I talked to Frank a few years ago, but he wasn't able to persuade me. Uh, but, but I do think that, um, the Selectmen, the Selectmen have to address that to, to, you know, you know, pump up some interest, to, to get some depth on that board, or make it a better board. And that's the last time I'm gonna talk tonight.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a great point. When I, when I was on AdCom, I think we had, Dennis was after me, but I think we had 11, either 10 or 11.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, and then I, I think around then, and then it just, somewhere, the last couple of years, it's dwind, it has dwindled down.
Thank you for letting me say it.
Yeah. No, thank you, Paul, it's a great point.
I mean, I guess to Paul's point, and I, I see where this is going, but I do think, just as a general note, it is somewhat concerning at times to limit volunteerism, because, you know, we have so few volunteers, and we have more committees now than ever, you know, we're always, so I guess it's that balancing act, where if, if folks have the time to devote and they're doing it, then on one hand, it's, you know, why be penalized? So I guess I don't fully understand the desire to limit, 'cause sometimes we have great people that can offer more than one, but...
Well, the thing is too, I mean, I, I guess, um, just like we're looking this over now, I mean, any policy that's adopted can be readdressed. If we, if we find that we're turning people away, people who are sitting and we're turning people away, I think we could, we could have another conversation, right?
Yeah, and that's kind of what happened with EDC.
Right now, that doesn't seem to be the problem, right now, so...
Well, I would say that we're not, we have, we don't have applicants for every single available position at this point. And I think to Paul's point, you know, the AdCom, which is not under this policy, but, you know, it's dwindled to the point where, quite honestly, I don't think it's anywhere near as effective as it used to be when it had a full board. So, you know, I, I do believe that, you know, limiting volunteerism is, is somewhat of an issue. Again, I'll go with the board, but I, I believe that, you know, it can't be one. I just don't think that's reasonable.
Oh, definitely, definitely not one, definitely. Well, my opinion is definitely not one.
Steph, I could also advertise that as well. I didn't really think, as that being a moderator appointment, I didn't think to put that on the list, or that could have been an oversight by me, but we can do that, if you like.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause all, all you can do is have them, yeah, maybe have them, just you just say, reach out to Frank.
Mm-hmm.
I, 'cause I, I think, I think I just came up to town, I came to town hall and, and got, got an application, turned it back in, and then somewhere down the road, I got a phone call from Frank, so... So that, that, that's still how they do it anyhow? They come up here, Katie, to?
They do, yep.
Apply for AdCom two? Okay.
It's an extremely important committee.
Absolutely.
And I think it should be a focus. I, I think at a town meeting, in the job they did at the town meeting, on some very difficult articles, you know, and they, uh, they really did a great job.
Anybody else have any, any comments specifically about, about this with the numbers, or? Do we, do we need to, I, I know we're gonna take a motion at the end to accept the policy, but how do we, how do we decide? Do we need to vote on a number?
I think you would give me the edits, and then you would say...
Okay, just give you the edit now.
Motion as amended.
So is, is everybody in agreement with the number?
I am.
Dennis, are you, are you good with two? I'm good with two. How about you, Bill?
All right, I'm good.
Good, okay, so why don't we, uh, we'll edit that to two?
Two.
Okay, and the last one, is it, is it three, is it four? There's three, right?
Three.
The last one is talking about, um, the eligibility, eligibility to, for an appointment. And this one is talking, this one says that you have to be a town resident. There are some circumstances where, uh, where, where's that little clause there? Is it, first one below? Katie, what, what, what was the, how, how did, um, how did it read? If, if the board felt...
So there's...
I should have mocked this off so I knew, is it number two? Wait a minute, so we want to know, uh...
Basically, there's four items that fall underneath that.
Yeah.
One's an exception, where if there's a potential for a conflict, um, of interest, even though they're a town employee, it's still, or I mean, a, a, a town resident, that you wouldn't appoint them.
Is that the one, was, I thought I read something that specifically said that you, you had to be an, you had to be a resident.
Yeah, it does, it says in general, "All residents of the town of Foxborough, 18 and over, shall be eligible for appointment in an appointed body, except for the following."
Okay. And, uh, the conversation, we, we know that there are a couple of committees that have non-residents, so I guess, um, I guess we just need to decide if we want to stick to just residents. Bill, do you have anything you want to say on that?
I mean, I, I just find it highly unusual that a non-resident, other than if they were on a committee because they are sitting in a position, so they're required to be at, you know, superintendent of schools has to be on a specific committee because it calls for a superintendent of schools to be there. That type of thing. But other than that, I think this is, you know, this is a town, these are town committees representing the town, making decisions for the town, to bring to the town. It kind of seems to me that that's really...
It should be from the town.
It should be from the town. I mean, it, it sounds like it's, it...
Sounds like a no-brainer, but you need to address it.
But obviously, it's, it's changed. You know, quite honestly, I mean, I know people, you know, move, we all, everybody's had friends that have moved out of town stuff, but the intention is that they wouldn't still, you know, serve in town, on the town board, so...
Stephanie? I think the language you were referencing is, did you find it? Okay.
Under residency.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, yeah, that, yeah, I knew there was something that I had read, and I was, I should have mocked it myself, so I, I would have been, I'll get right to it. Yeah, under residency, it says, "In all instances, appointed body, body members must be residents of the town of Foxborough. There may be exceptions to this rule when a non-resident member of the town's, town staff, by virtue of their employment status, would be a beneficial or necessary appointee to an appointed body to facilitate execution." Okay? Uh, da, 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 but...
This would be in the current...
Permit the non-resident member to continue to serve. So, actu- actually, this, the, the non-residents that we do have now are not town employees.
No.
Right, so I think, um, right now in the, the handbook, which was approved by the Select Board, under residency on page four, it does say, "However, the board maintains the right to appoint non-residents to ad hoc or advisory committees as appropriate to the mission of the committee." So that's why we just need clarification for the policy.
Yeah.
Let me do it again.
Put me on the spot. However, it says, "All advisory committees serve at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. The Board of the Selectmen will typically afford appointing preferences to full-time town residents. However, the board maintains the right to appoint non-residents to ad hoc or advisory committees as appropriate to the mission of the committee."
So would that have to be adjusted if we put this policy in place?
Right, so once, if this is approved tonight, I would go through the handbook to be on the next agenda for update and approval.
So my hunch is that was, for example, you know, Dan Krantz sits on the Economic Development Committee as a representative of Craft Group. I don't know if that's where that stemmed from, but that's certainly an example of where, when I joined the town, you know, eight and a half years ago, Dan was on the EDC and has been ever since. So at some point, that decision was made, and he's represented the Crafts ever since, and he does not live in town. So that's the one I'm familiar with, and I don't know if that was created for that reason, or whether it just happened to work out, but.
And I kind of get potentially the representation of the Craft Group, but I would also say that they have to have other employees that live in town, which I know they do, that could be on a board like this if they chose. So it would then be a resident taxpayer or a resident voting member that would be able to fill the role, so. Unless Dan's the only one in the organization that could do that type of work, I don't know.
Yeah, not to put you on the spot, Paige, but obviously, since you've been here, you've been on that committee, do you see, I'm not even going to say Dan, because this isn't about, this isn't about Dan Krantz, this is about, do we want non-residents? Do you see somebody that is a non-resident from a business in town that might bring something to that? You know, I know that's kind of a general question, because I guess if you were going to bring somebody in or accept some, they would be having to bring something to the table. But do you feel that, you know, like I said, this isn't about Dan, I'm just in general.
No, I certainly think that, given, you know, given the Crafts Group's holdings and where they are in town, it's certainly good to have them at the economic development table, you know, but I think it's a board's policy decision to determine whether it's a resident or a non-resident. You know, Dan's certainly done a great job, and he's a great person at the table. No problem working with him, and he's a great person to work with. But policy-wise, you'll have to decide, you know, and I don't know who else they would put in.
But he could still be at the table, he just wouldn't have a voting right.
Correct.
This isn't a widespread problem.
No, but it just comes down to, are boards and committees, should they be residents, or does it not matter?
But is it, in fact, a problem in Foxborough? Do we, at this moment, do we have many committee members or chairman?
We have a couple.
Okay. So this decision could potentially affect them in what they do with their boards?
Yeah. Dennis, you have any thoughts on that?
No, I could see, there's a lot of times you might need really specialized expertise, you know, and not be available in a town resident. So we're not close that off, you know, as an option.
So are we saying you don't have to be a resident?
But if it wasn't a resident, it has to come before the Board of Selectmen, to, right? You have to get the okay.
Right.
You would have to get the okay from.
Under that handbook, but under this policy, there isn't that provision. So I don't know if you want to take the language, I don't know how you want to handle it. I think, I mean, like Debbie said, I think we have two instances, so it's, but it does, you know, obviously affect people.
Yeah, it needs an end, it needs an answer.
Yeah.
If we're going to take a straw vote, mine is that it should be a resident.
Yes?
What's a straw vote?
Bill thinks it should be a resident. Well, did you, should we go down the road? Should I just say what I thought, too? I'm completely on the fence, and I don't usually sit on top of the fence very often. I usually fall one way or the other. I'm going to say that I wouldn't have a problem with it. We could say that it has to be, it would have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen if it was a non-resident.
Anybody on any committee has to be approved, right, so that's a non-issue.
Yeah, I would say, I would say I'm okay, I'm okay with it. With it being a non-resident, if it's approved, if it benefits, if it benefits.
Who's making that decision?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't know what, the distinction is here, but.
Exactly, this isn't, we're not voting this, so.
Absolutely need a non-resident, and it has to come to the select board to approve that. I mean, I'm satisfied with that.
But why does it, why would you have to have somebody on the board voting? You could have somebody sitting at the thing to give their opinion on a specialty thing. But why do they have to be one of them?
They don't have to be voting.
Well, you know, something, I know you already said that, I guess I didn't take it all the way in, you know. So we could allow them to be on, they just wouldn't be a voting number.
Well, they wouldn't be on the committee, they would just attend. Just like Paul can come up here and talk to us, the same thing in any committee.
Yes, does that change anything for you, or are you still?
No, I'm good with what we just discussed, yeah. Now, is the person from the Craft Group, is he a voting member?
He is a voting member.
I have no problem with them being from out of town or a non-resident, as long as they come before this board to be appointed, which they do, as a board or commission member. If it's a valid reason and it adds to the success of that committee in getting their job done, I don't have a problem with that. Okay, I tend to agree with that as well. Okay, so we have to take a vote on this, so we know whether we're going to. Okay.
So how big an issue would this be for the Craft Group, just to put it out there?
I have no idea. I'm sure they won't be thrilled, but I don't know, I haven't spoken to them about it. You know, Dan has represented the town, Dan is a great person from that organization to deal with, but whether he could still represent, you know, at the table without a vote, I don't, I don't know. We haven't met in so long, and there really hasn't been a lot going on, so it's hard to know what's coming up next, but. There are other employees, sorry, there are other employees that live in town that could probably represent, but I don't want to understate, you know, how valuable Dan has been.
But this isn't, you know, so it's not just that committee. So, you know, we do have somebody on another committee that's also in that same situation, that doesn't represent the Craft Group, and it's, you know, but, again, so, I'm going to put it in a very simplistic way. Three years from now, I retire from the Town of Foxborough and move to Fairhaven, and I'm the chair of the building committee. You're not going to have a problem with me coming back and being the chair of the building committee, are you?
No, they probably wouldn't. That's probably a bad example.
I sure hope you would, because, you know. But that's my only point to this. I mean, we make decisions, if we make decisions, you know, the Craft Group versus another one is different, you know, because one's representing an organization that is in town, but just the same. You have to treat them the same, so I, whatever, you know, I know where I'm going, you guys can vote whichever way you want.
Okay.
So I have one more change possible to the policy.
Yep.
So it's under, let's see, on page two, under three, there are officers of boards or committees. I have a proposal here that would add, "Elected boards that appoint liaisons to appointed boards are appointed solely by that board, committee, or commission, and the select board is not the appointing authority. Liaisons should be reported to the town manager's office." So that's just to make clear that if you are a liaison, you're not necessarily an appointee of this board. Clear as mud? Katie, can you explain it better?
Sure, so it would be, for example, like tonight, so I, Bill is not going to receive an appointment slip as being the select board liaison to the CIP committee. The same way for someone who's on an elected board, from say, like, the planning board being a liaison to an appointed board, they're not going to get, they're not going to get an appointment slip from the select board, because you are not the appointing authority for those liaisons. Then the language could be written a little bit better. Paige is a wordsmith, so she can.
We could tighten it up, but that's to make crystal clear that there's no confusion as to what the role of that is and what your role is with respect to them.
Yeah, so, yeah, so if a certain board or committee.
Under number three. Right, Katie, second paragraph? Where would you want it?
Um, anywhere, sounds great. I thought under, under three, because it would be, you know, it's talking about, yeah, like in addition to that paragraph. And then those would need to be reported to, you know, the town manager's office, and really, when I say the town manager's office, it's a boards and committee database that's linked to the clerk, so just so everyone has the information.
So you want to re-say that?
Sure. Yeah, I know, she nominated me, she nominated me to be the reader here. "Elected boards that appoint liaisons to appointed boards are appointed solely by that board, committee, or commission, and the select board is not the appointing authority." Period. "Liaisons should be reported to the town manager's office."
I get it, so we just don't, we don't oversee, or they're not getting appointed by us, because the bylaws say they appoint somebody.
Or the bylaw of the committee basically says who they're appointed by.
Okay. All right, anything else that you saw, Katie, that you?
Did anybody in the board ever know?
Did you decide on the resident information?
Not yet.
Sorry, okay. No rush, sorry.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything that they saw that stuck out to them?
Bill, did you have a second?
No, that's good, I have anything else.
Everybody else is good? All right, so I guess, all right, so we have to.
So where did we end up?
So we have to, we have to vote on that, because we're not all.
I am really uncomfortable with taking a vote that takes the voting right away from the Craft Group person. And I get, you know, what everyone's saying, Bill, but, you know, you're the thousand-pound gorilla in Foxborough. You know, we shouldn't underestimate what a vote like, how that, a vote like that can be characterized. There's no ill intent, it's just really.
But I guess.
If there's a way of, you know, discussing it with him in advance and saying, look, we're just trying to clean everything up and, you know.
That would probably be a very nice courtesy, certainly, to give them a heads up, if that were the case.
Yeah, and I guess that generally, there's nine voting members, he's one vote. And I, but I guess what Bill's saying, we shouldn't really be zoning in on this one, because this could come back for another, somebody, somebody could apply an out-of-town or former, former resident that they want to sit on something, and then where we're going to be. So I get where Bill's coming from. I guess, I guess the only thing is, this is what's in front of us now, I don't have a problem with him. You know, and it is just one vote.
So then you have to make a determination on the second person, too?
Yeah. Okay, I guess we have to just take a vote. Okay, all those in favor of, so I'm asking for no, because I'm going to say all those in favor of leaving the policy as is?
No, I think you say, all those in favor of accepting the residency requirement would be one vote.
Okay, which would mean no, no out-of-towners.
Right.
Okay.
Let's take the vote on that.
Yep, so we'll take a vote on all those in favor of.
And just a reminder, with a four vote, a two to two would fail, so you'd need a three-one to pass.
There has to be a second, too?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? Do I say, do we have to make another motion, or is just the opposed?
Yeah.
Unconfused.
How do I vote if?
You would have been, if Bill was in favor, we would have been opposed.
Okay.
Is that how we had to do it, or then just make another motion?
No, you were fine, yeah.
The opposed, just make it, but now we have to say, we have to say that it's okay if it's a resident, because that's not what's down here, I mean, if it's a non-resident.
You have to amend this policy.
Well, you could add that sentence.
Yeah, but where it says, is this covered, where it said about? All right, you know the word embedded, Katie, I'm going to, I'm going to refer to you. You looked at this policy upwards, downwards, everything. So what would you suggest be the addition to it?
So you'd want to say, "Under E, eligibility for appointment, in general, all residents of the Town of Foxborough aged 18 and over shall be eligible for appointment to an appointed body. However, the board maintains the right to appoint non-residents to ad hoc or advisory committees as appropriate to the mission of the committee."
But you still need the acceptance follows, because you don't want to negate those four.
Right, yeah, and then a comma, except for the following.
And then this G would have to change, too, as well, right, under residency. You might use the same language, the exception language?
Sure.
Okay. So everybody, can you just, can you read it one more time, Katie, just so, just so everybody hears? So here's the language.
"In general, all residents of the Town of Foxborough aged 18 and over shall be eligible for appointment to an appointed body. However, the board maintains the right to appoint non-residents to ad hoc or advisory committees as appropriate to the mission of the committee, comma, except for the following," and then there's four other points.
Okay. All those that are in favor of that language being added to the policy? I'll make a motion that we add that language to the policy, that's probably the way to do it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? You're voting, yea or nay? Are you kind of saying, you know what I'm saying? Okay.
Unopposed.
Okay, I'm sorry, Bill, and all those opposed, Bill, okay.
And do you, I'm sorry, but on G, do you want to add that same however language right after the first sentence, "In all instances, appointed bodies," and then say however in the same language, under residency?
Yeah. Do we have to actually vote on that? That's okay, just to say, to add the language.
I think you could say, like, "A motion to approve the board, committee, and commission appointment policy as amended." I took the notes. I can send a clean version.
Okay. All right, is there a second to, do I have to make the motion?
Yeah, you got to say it, I can't say it, sorry.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to, Katie, you're going to have to get me through this one.
Okay, "Motion to approve."
Motion to approve.
"The board, committee, and commission."
The board, committee, and commission.
"Appointment policy."
Appointment policy.
"As amended."
As amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so that was the big one, and one opposed. I'm sorry, Bill, I keep, you're sitting right next to me, and I just keep forgetting about you. So that was, that was to accept everything? Okay, all right, so we, all right, so we have a policy, okay. Sorry, everybody at home, this is a lot, lot of tweaking, this is a pretty big, pretty big policy here, lots of pages, we just want to make sure we have it right. And by the way, I just, I just X'd myself out of here by accident, so, all right, so, okay. View and vote on board. Okay. All right, so now we're going to go ahead and do vote on appointments.
Are you going to do the special municipal? Did that get mentioned?
Are we on 6.4 now?
Um, yeah, so.
Do you want to do the special municipal employee thing first? So do you want to do the special municipal employee thing first?
Undo that for, oh, I'm sorry. I skipped right over, didn't I? All right. I'm sorry, I logged myself out of the computer by accident. All right, um, list, okay. Members of the permanent municipal school building committee. Okay. I'm sorry, hold on, I logged myself out of here. All right, Katie, you want to? Well, I am, you would have loved tonight, this, on this. This policy is quite the policy. Okay. All right.
So far, the special municipal employee list were, um, upon review of our policy, we want to make sure that the members of our permanent municipal and school building committee are allowed to hold such a position as they are employees of the town. So we did speak with, um, town council that by adding, um, that language to our special employee list that we would not have a conflict.
Okay. So we need to, so Deb has a motion for the new language?
Motion to update the special municipal employees list to include members of the permanent municipal and school building committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Hi. All those opposed?
Standing.
Oh, and I'm sorry, and I'm standing. I thought your hand went up. I, I, I keep looking this way. I don't, I don't know why I don't look that way, Bill. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to make a, make a mental note of that. Okay. All right, so now comes the appointment. Uh-oh, my battery's running low, Katie, which I, I think, I think after this, I can, I can probably get by, so we'll be good. Okay. All right, so this is, this is how we're going to have to do this. We have, uh, friends down in Alabama watching to make sure we do all these appointments correctly. So what's going to happen is, I'm going to say the board or committee, I'm going to make the motion, I'm going to say the name. After that, um, we'll need a second. Just procedurally, I'll say any discussion, if there, and then we're just going to take a vote. Okay, so, all right, so I'd like to, okay, I'm going to make a motion to appoint to the agricultural commission Frederick Grossman.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Motion to appoint to the board of recreation Kevin Powers.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Motion to appoint to the board of registers James Mullen.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Uh, motion to appoint to the cable television advisory committee Max Stoper and Dave, David Uden.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Pneu River Equafer Advisory Committee, Robert Worthy, Timothy Daniels, Richard Catholic.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to, uh, appoint, it's capital, to capital improvement planning committee Paige Duncan.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to appoint to the child sexual abuse awareness committee, Robert Correa, Linda Walsh, and Christina LaRose.
Second.
So, yeah, discussion. So here's, here's the first of the other issues. So Bob Correa, who was instrumental with, uh, no disagreement there in the start of this committee and the, um, you know, initial phases of it, is no longer a resident of the town of Foxborough.
Okay. I would add, add to discussion. I might feel differently about this than the other committee. So do, we have open seats there, though, too?
We do.
We do. Okay. All right, I guess, um, just, just because we, just because, oh, actually, should I have been doing these, the multiples? I should have been doing name by name, right? Okay. I can, I think we're okay going forward. Just, just because, just because we, we have multiples and there is a non-resident, while we didn't say it was a thing, if anybody has, has an issue with a non-resident on this board, this gives us the opportunity to make that decision, correct? Okay. All those in favor, uh, I'm sorry, motion to appoint, um, child sexual abuse awareness committee, um, Robert Correa.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion other than that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
It's two to two.
Two to two, yep, yep. Motion to appoint to the child sexual abuse awareness committee Linda Walsh.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the child sexual abuse committee Christina LaRose.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Clean up Fox, okay, I'm doing this one at a time anyhow. Sorry, everybody, this is a long list. Uh, motion to appoint to the cleanup Foxborough committee Michael Macasella.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint to the cleanup Foxborough committee Arthur Dooley.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appro, uh, motion to appoint to the cleanup Foxborough committee Joseph Garrity.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the cleanup Foxborough committee Nathan Erman.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint to the conservation commission James Mash.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the council on aging and human services advisory Jean Bono.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Motion to approve to the economic development committee Tom Murphy, Thomas Murphy.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to appoint to the economic development committee Kevin Weinfeld.
Apologies, you can omit that.
Okay.
Could also leave out Barney as well.
Okay. Uh, motion to appoint to the economic development committee, uh, J. Catherine Rollins.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the economic development committee Barnett Overeux.
That one you can skip.
Skip, okay. All right. Uh, motion to appoint to the economic development committee Daniel Krantz.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Um, motion to appoint to the economic development committee Heather Harding.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to appoint to the economic development committee Amy LeBrock.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to appoint to the employee insurance advisory committee Jeffrey Whitehouse.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to appoint to the employee insurance advisory committee Sean Buckley.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to appoint to the employee insurance advisory committee. Is it E? Anyone know how to say that? Sorry, at home, E-
It's Owen.
Eon, Eon?
Uh, it's Owen.
Owen, oh, it is Owen, okay. Owen Barnert? All right, close enough.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Uh, motion to appoint to the employee insurance advisory committee Timothy Golden.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the employee insur, insurance advisory committee Timothy Daniels.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to appoint to the employee insurance advisory committee Robert Collin.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the employee insurance advisory committee Jessica Minton.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to appoint to the Foxborough Commission on Disability James Houlihan.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to, um, appoint to the Foxborough Commission on Disability Susan Collins.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Foxborough Commission on Disability Charles Hobbs.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Uh, motion to appoint to the historic district commission William Lord.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to report to the historical commission, V. Ta, oh, oh, V. Taylor Ford Jr.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the historical commission Deborah Wendell.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the historical commission Mark Ferencik. Am I saying his name right?
Forensic.
Forensic. Forensic.
Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the liquor control agent Adam Burns.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the liquor control agent David Fiscado.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the liquor control agent John Chamberlain.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the liquor control agent Michael Brace.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the liquor control agent Patrick Kaufman.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the liquor control agent Richard Noonan Jr.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the liquor control agent Sean Buckley.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion to appoint to the liquor control agent Valise Collins.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to appoint to the liquor control agent Megan Allen.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Did everyone, did everyone say aye? I said it very loud. All right. Motion to appoint to the liquor control agent Lucas Strayton.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to appoint to the MVTA advisory board Paige Duncan.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the municipal hearings officer Paige Duncan.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Well, wait a second, I want to ask, I want to-
Okay.
Are these positions that you have to be in because of town manager? So we're, that's the part that we're falling within. Just like, we're starting to have so many, I'm like, whoa, she's well over.
I just can't help but volunteering.
Okay.
Okay. So all those in favor, municipal hearing officer?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint permanent municipal and school building Gary Whitehouse. Any discussion?
So, yeah. So this becomes a problem then, right? Because he's the one that would be five committees.
Okay.
Obviously, some by, by right. I don't know which committee, I, I think we talked before, which committee that someone would prefer if they couldn't do on all of them.
Yeah, yeah.
So he, he's on the planning board, he is a, an agent for another committee as a liaison for the planning board, which is allowed. He is currently on the building committee, he's currently on the personnel wage, and what's the-
Town asset review.
Town asset review.
And the veteran services advisory committee.
Oh, and the veteran service.
So, so because we're here doing it now, should we just vote? Because there's nobody, obviously, there's nobody else. We didn't turn anybody away for any of his spots, did we? Do we know that?
They were not advertised.
Okay.
No, you have a policy now that you have to-
Yeah, that's right. So do we vote and then, and then, and then have him tell us which ones he wants to, which ones he wants to be on, and we advertise the other one? Can we vote on, on him?
Would you maybe table it for tonight, and then let him choose his two, and then at the next meeting, you vote on that, maybe? So then that way?
Right.
Okay.
Jessica.
Yep. Okay. Motion to appoint to the permanent municipal and school building Kyle Fuller.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to appoint to the permanent municipal and school building John Hattie.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to appoint the personnel board Tracy Vasili.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion, okay, we're going to skip that, right? Uh, motion to appoint to the planning board alternate Thomas Murphy.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ooh, we're almost there. More than halfway through. All right. Motion to appoint to the seminary board of direction, directors Paige Duncan.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the stadium advisory committee Ronald Hodgson? Am I saying that right, you think?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Katie, you gave a look like, oh, no, Steph. Not even, not even close, right? Apologies to anybody that I brought your name. Uh, motion to appoint to the stadium advisory committee Dennis Olson.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the stadium advisory committee George Bell.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to appoint to the stadium advisory committee James Kelly.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1655.94] Motion to appoint to the Stadium Advisory Committee, James Evans.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to appoint to the Stadium Advisory Committee, Joel Angelico.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion to appoint to the Stadium Advisory Committee, Randall Briggs.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Stadium Advisory Committee, Timothy Egan.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to appoint to the Stadium Advisory Committee, Thomas Rossback.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint to the Stadium Advisory Committee, Blair Crane.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to appoint to the Stadium Advisory Committee, Nathan Weber.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If I go fast, anybody who has discussion just stop me, okay? Um, motion to appoint to the Survey Board, John Napoli.
No, you skipped somebody.
Did I skip somebody?
Yep.
Didn't I just say, John Hattie?
I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to appoint to the Stadium Advisory Committee, John Hattie.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Survey Board, John De- John De Napoli.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to appoint to the Survey Board, William Buckley Jr.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Survey Board, Michael Kelleher.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint, appoint to the Survey Board, Scott Shippey.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Town Asset Review Committee, Lorraine Brew.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Town Asset Review Committee, Kevin Weinfeld.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion, we all like slipped for half a second. Motion to appoint to the Town Asset Review Committee. Oh, skipping, I'm sorry. Uh, motion to appoint to the Town Asset Review Committee, Barnett Overeem.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee, Colin Sweeney.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee, Naomi Boucher.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint to the Veteran Services Advisory Commission, Adam Burns.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee, Mac Boucher.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Veteran Service Advisory Committee, William Dudley.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to appoint to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee, Michael Kerr.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Veteran Service Advisory Committee, Patricia Shea.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee, John Conley.
Second.
Any, any discuss, I almost skipped you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion to appoint to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee, Douglas Silvestri.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint to the Veteran Service Advisory Committee, Bertha Malouf.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Kurt. Alright, Yegian. Yegian? Yegian. Yegian, okay.
Second.
All the, oh my god, this is killing me. Uh, any discussion? I forgot what I was gonna say. Any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, Kurt. Um, motion to appoint to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Eric Hogberg. Hogberg. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Holy, conoly, that was quite the list. Congratulations to all that were appointed. And thank you for your service, most importantly. Okay. Okay, I have no screen, I walked out.
Plug that in. Plug that in, you'll get. Get this side.
Alright. Alright. Okay. Okay, okay, um, next is, um, discussion on Director of Operations role. So, um, Bill and I put this, um, back on the agenda just to have, um, just to have a second discussion. Um, you know, uh, we have a new, you know, uh, the board changed since. Um, we just thought it was worth, um, with having two new board members, just to have, um, another discussion about it. Do you wanna lead that discussion, Bill, or?
Yeah, I mean, in, I guess there's a couple of concerns that I have in, but what I would like to start with is just a motion to reconsider the vote of the Select Board of April 9th, authorizing the creation of the Director of Operations on Non-Union Managerial Pay Plan.
Second.
That, first of all, that wasn't on the agenda, there's no mention of a vote, but, and Steph, you mentioned you were gonna wait for Doc.
This is just a vote to reconsider.
Okay.
The discussion.
As, like, to, okay.
But, in talking to Town Council, it was also, based on the agenda item, he said it was appropriate.
Okay. So, alright, we had a second. Okay, um, any discussion?
What are we doing here?
Reconsidering the vote from two meetings ago on the creation of the Director of Operations.
So, my opinion here, or my thoughts here, um, I looked at the, obviously, the, the posting, um, and I, I watched the, that April 9th meeting probably half a dozen times. It seemed to me that there was some consideration or question as to what was actually being voted and why it was being voted. The, the need for the committee to vote that prior to understanding exactly what the layout of this position was going to be, what the job description was going to be, and how it was gonna be put together, you know, really wasn't necessary. The, what would happen by doing the voting and putting the position out there was you would actually, then be coming back potentially with somebody who could fill the role and how you would fill it. The, my concern is that the, the town has been pretty upfront with the fact that they don't want an Assistant Town Manager. That when we voted to put in the HR Director, that was the replacement for the Assistant Town Manager. Um, and my secondary concern to that is, over the last five years on the town side, there have been a number of changes that have been made, um, in positions, elevating those positions. You know, simply the Town Accountant is now the Assistant Finance Director. Um, we have two other positions that are basically what I'll call super department heads. They sit over three departments, um, and manage those three departments to basically assist the Town Manager in not having to deal directly with those three, but to deal with the individuals involved. And now we're being asked to basically create a position which, by all intent, can't be filled by somebody outside because it would be a budgetary problem. So therefore, it could only, is only limited to an internal employee. And my opinion is, no matter who the internal employee is, that if they currently have a job that we felt, or the town felt, was a full-time job, that are we then shortcoming, or, you know, short, uh, shorting that particular department for the, the needs for that department, um, to, in effect, create a, a secondary position? Because you can't do, you can't be full-time for everything. And, and I, but yet we're paying full-time for some of those positions to be filled and expecting that those departments get the attention of, full-time of those people. You know, so, and we've already diverted, you know, two to having basically more responsibility than just the department that they were in. So, I personally have a concern with this and feel that the, you know, while I, I fully appreciate, you know, Paige's request for, you know, additional support, it, it basically flies in the face of what, you know, what has been said since day one is that there's no Assistant Town Manager. There's no part-time Assistant Town Manager, there's no full-time Assistant Town Manager. And I just see this as a potential creep, um, for, uh, the Assistant Town Manager ending up into a full-time position in the future. And that's my opinion.
Okay. So, I guess, um, so, I watched the meeting. Um, I had a couple of people kind of reach out and said, oh, we bring back the Assistant Town Manager's role. And, um, you know, I said, no, I don't think we are. And then I figured, you know, I, you know, I was on vacation, so I, I did not zoom in on that meeting. So, I watched the meeting. And, um, I guess I'm, I'm gonna kind of blanket what Bill said. I, I feel the need, you know, I, 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 I understand you're, you're, you coming to this board and, and saying that there is a need. And I just, I go back to the same thing. I mean, as, as we hired, um, John Cordier, he asked about an assistant. We told him, no, he would not be receiving an assistant. And then, um, you know, so, um, Paige, you know, you didn't ask then. I mean, the, the process was a little bit different. We kind of, you got thrown into your interview right here. And, um, I, I, I feel, I'm only gonna speak for myself. I didn't really see the need for the Assistant Town Manager when Bill Keegan was here. I, I thought, um, you know, we, we pay our Town Manager a good salary, he should be able to, to, you know, do town operations. And then what happened was, uh, a board sat here and Bill showed up in a meeting and said he had created a position, which was, um, uh, HR and Assistant Town Manager. And a board sat here and they could not do anything, anything about it. So, as I watched the meeting, I, I just felt like the cart was before the horse. I, I understand what you were saying, like, how do you, how do you, um, get somebody and then come back to the board? But I felt like by the board, that vote that they took was giving you permission. And then, um, I, I know, I know that we weren't going to, that was gonna be your hire, if there was a hire. I know that you didn't have to come back to this board. But I heard a lot of, well, you know, you know, I'm gonna, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get creative, this, that. But then I think, I felt like that vote pretty much gave you the okay to hire somebody. And, um, you know, so, and I, I think I heard Doc at one point say, you know, a post would come back before the board. And I think, I, you know, you know, then, then Paige said, well, I kinda, I kinda need the okay and to create the post to go forward to see what we're gonna do. But I, for one, and, and I've gotten, you know, since we put it on the agenda, I got multiple people inquiring, well, what is this position? And so, I, I think it's an Assistant Town Manager, but under a different name. And I, I'm not sure how, how it's gonna work out. I, I would've been happy giving you some leeway to, to look into it. But I feel like that vote pretty much gave you the okay. That the position was created and that you could hire somebody. And I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not gonna speak for the other board members. I just, it was, it seemed very confusing to me.
Yeah.
Dennis, out of us, you're the only one that was here, so I'll let you speak.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we went that far, at least that's my recollection. Now, you know, I didn't know this was gonna be on the agenda, or I would've reviewed the language myself.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, I didn't think we got, we, we got that far. I don't think we came out of that meeting authorizing her to fill that position. Correct me if I'm wrong, Paige, but that was, that's my rec-
You authorized me to post it.
You authorized you to post it. And that was it. And then you were gonna have to come back to the board with, you know, you know, more details about all of this because there was some discomfort. And then we would take it from there. So.
Well, again, and that is where the gray area is, is you all approve the position on the pay plan, and I do the rest. So, that is the gray area. But I did see, you know, I was at the meeting and I watched it too, so I'm familiar with the sort of back and forth. Yeah. And the reason I pushed for posting was, as I've said, this is a creative approach. Like, as we've talked about, there's, there's not like we're hiring someone off the street and giving them an entirely new budget. So, that allowed me to sort of see the level of interest and to see who I could perhaps start getting creative with. And so, that's why I wanted to see, 'cause I, like I think I said in the meeting, it may be that there were no legs to this proposal at all, that nothing was gonna work. So, I just wanted enough opportunity to figure out whether there was something that could assist the town moving forward. Yeah.
Did you get any interest?
I did.
More than two?
Well, we got multiple from outside, but we got one from internal.
One?
Yes.
Have you hired?
No.
No.
Okay. So, but here's the thing, Dennis, I think that vote created the position. The vote created the position.
I, I didn't think that's what was voted, but here's my suggestion, it's, it's late.
Yeah.
We have a couple of people that are new. I think we should treat this as a de novo situation.
I know, Dennis. Start over.
That means that, you know, we just have to go through the whole thing now with Doc here and, and revisit the vote after a, a full discussion and a revisiting of the rationale and everything you brought forward at that time.
And I'll have more information, like, I can have specifics, too.
And then bring it back to the new board when Doc's here and we can take the vote on it.
We have a motion which we, did we approve it?
No.
You seconded it?
I did.
Right.
Second, we, we went into discussion.
Discussion, right, so we're still in discussion.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I'm okay, I think we should definitely revisit, revisit it.
Right.
I, I'm, I'm gonna vote yes to Bill's motion, 'cause I don't, I, I don't want us to have that position until we get, till Paige is able to come back. But I, I, I do believe the motion created the position. So, that position is now, now there. Whether it gets filtered out, but the position is there. So, so, I, I, like, I, I don't want, I, I just wanted, I, 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 okay, I said enough, like, we should just vote, we should just vote.
So, so, basically, this first vote is just to, um, obviously do what we're doing, is have the discussion. But we should approve it or disapprove it, one way or the other.
Yeah.
So, is there a motion on?
So, does the, so the motion is to rescind?
Reconsider the vote.
Reconsider the vote.
No, reconsider the vote of the Select Board of, of April 9th, authorizing the creation of the Director of Operations on the Non-Union Managerial Pay Plan.
Second.
Alright, any other discussion?
No, I'm, I'm just objecting to the fact that the, the vote was taken by the prior Select Board, and now we're rescinding, I don't know where that fits.
We have the right.
I'm sure we do. I'm opposed, so.
Yeah, okay, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All of us opposed?
So then, just so that it does go through the full re-motion process and everything is brought in front of us, I motion to rescind the April 9th Select Board authorization to create the Director of Operations of the non-union managerial pay plan.
Second. Any other discussion?
May I? May I? Okay, I have a little PowerPoint I'd like to share. And it might be moot, because we're gonna do it all over again, but I figure I was prepared for this, so I'm gonna do it. Mr. Beck, thank you. So you're right, I mean, it looks like an Assistant Town Manager, I can't get this to be a full screen, hold on. It looks like a Assistant Town Manager, but it isn't, because there's no way to do a full-time, let's just see if this catches up, yeah. So there's no way to do a full-time, so to Bill's point, it would be shared. So, why am I asking for this? Just to give you some food for thought. And I know you're saying, you're making this declaration that the town made this decision not to have an Assistant Town Manager, and that's fine, although it's funny, because I go to every meeting and they're like, you need an assistant, and I'm like, it's not gonna happen, so it's fine. But just to remember that the Town Manager's office is the conduit to all town government. So anybody who has a question or problem or concern, they come to that office, they call that office, they email me, they do. So, all other major, not, major departments have seconds, you know, police, fire, DPW, schools, Deb, I think when you were Rec Director, you had an assistant. So, you know, there is zero redundancy right now, there is no backup for me. I'm on vacation June 4th to June 11th. I don't know who's doing anything, I mean, I can ask, you know, Kelleher or somebody like that, but I'm continuing to turn to them on a volunteer basis, they don't need to do that. So I'm a single point of failure in a hundred million dollar corporation. So, and after last year, I'm just surprised that the board would be comfortable with that, because it's not a good place to be, because continuity in government is critical. So, you're right, I'm still looking at the Assistant Town Manager, I am not proposing an Assistant Town Manager, and I don't even have my full proposal vetted out yet, so I'm not ready to hire, I'm not about to hire. But if you look here, you'll see the list of our comparables, many communities have the Assistant Town Manager. In fact, there's only one town that has a million dollar budget, a hundred million dollar budget that doesn't have it, everybody else does. Millis is just getting an Assistant Town Manager with eight, almost 8,500 residents. Canton just switched, or they're switching either now or July 1, I just went in a meeting with them and they went up to an assistant. So, just to show that this is a, Rentham, Norfolk, two small towns, they have it, so.
Do they all have directors, help, human service, HR directors?
Some of them do, Rentham and Norfolk do, yes, but not all, I do have that one. So this is just an example, it's hard to see here, but the top calendar item is a typical day for me. So if you notice, I was saying, I was like, oh, I have 30 minutes there, and then I realized to the right, I'm double booked, so they don't. So you see, that's a typical day, and I think Bill's seen it a little bit, I'm in meetings constantly. That bottom one is my week. And actually, that's a little bit of a light week, because I have Friday kind of without too, too much going on. Meetings are back-to-back. When I'm in a meeting, I am not available. Katie has been stepping up and doing yeoman's work, but she's really taking on more responsibility and more, and handling things that really are not within her job description. It's a tremendous workload. Now, you say you wanted HR, and that's very clear, so what, okay, so who would be my backup? Maybe Paige Appolito, she's my HR Director. But in the past, there's always been this clear desire to have a vertical separation, that's why they went to HR as a separate function. So we don't want that overlap. And honestly, I didn't hire Paige as an Assistant Town Manager, and she's not interested in playing that role. Her hands are full, she's taking on a lot of responsibility in the HR, you know, that's very important, you know, with the police and fire, we need HR and we, we don't say, you know, that's a definite need, and we've been taking advantage of it. In Foxborough, we're heavily unionized, so I can't turn and ask people, say, hey, can you do this for me? If it's not in their job description, they don't have to do it. So it's, it's been a challenge. So for me, as a CEO, I would be remiss not to tell you that this is a problem, and I will be able to, now, I'm gonna be able to do this job, and I will always do the very best job, I'm gonna kick butt at it, and I will always do that. But I can bring more, the strategic, the long range. I, you know, as it is now, I'm doing day-to-day, I'm keeping things afloat, I'm doing a great job, but I wanna think strategically, I wanna think of a better way to serve our residents, and how do we engage with them, how do we prioritize communication, how do we do all the things we do? So, I'll just close it out with this, is like, I get it, that there's concerns and all that, and so my commitment is, is that this will be from within, it will not increase the burden to the taxpayers, it will not increase department budgets, and I don't mean just for next year, I mean, I can, I could commit that for up to five years, or whatever the number is, I'm, I'm not seeking to create a new position. And if I'm unable to fulfill these commitments, I would not hire, and I will not hire. So I just wanna put that on the table as we go back to the drawing board for a couple weeks. It is needed, it's not for me, it's for the town of Foxborough. I'm gonna do a good job no matter what, but I'll just leave it at that. So that is why I think that the town of Foxborough needs additional operational support to support our office.
There's a motion, a second.
Dennis, did you wanna say something? Did you, before Paige did?
No, I said what I wanted to say, I just don't think the timing of this action, to me, makes a whole lot of sense, but.
Well, but Dennis, in, in, all we're doing right now is, is bringing it to the point where it has to come all back to the full board. It will come back to the full board with a full description of what's happening.
Okay.
And, and, you know, how the layout's going to work, and how the funding is gonna happen, and all of that.
Right.
So, that's all we're doing at this point.
Right, well, I think that's fine, and I think we actually, I, I thought that's what we agreed to at the.
But that's not what you technically did.
Okay, I'd have to look at the language, but I thought that's how we left it.
The vote, the vote okayed the position. Yeah, I mean, that's, we just wanna cut, just wanna circle back and have all the information, you know, and, and of course, Paige will be able to, to, you know, to, to give her side of it, and, you know, and obviously, we heard part of that, and she has more time to prepare, and, yeah, and when Doc's here, when we have a full board. I mean, listen, I was on vacation, you know, you, you made that decision without a full, full board. I, I told Paige when I was putting it on the agenda, we would not, all we, we would not have the final vote without Doc here. I think a full board should be here, should here. And, and I did say that, and, and, we're not, we're not gonna just throw everything out right here. So we can, just, we're just backing up a little, that's all.
Right, okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Zero.
Okay, four, four zero. Yeah, we're just backing up, that's all. Okay. Okay. Town Manager's update.
So we had a meeting with Pat Costello and the team about Olive and Mint again. We had our first hearing with the ABCC on May 8th. We, Pat Costello thinks it could be a couple months before a resolution is reached. Apparently, you know, the, a denial of a renewal and then an appeal of a renewal is never seen, so they don't, they, they don't, the lawyers don't necessarily know whether the ABCC knows what they're gonna do. In the meantime, there's another entity that wants to open a restaurant on that business, like, keep the function hall going, and then also open a restaurant. We did meet with them the other day with Pat Costello, and he advised us that we might want to work with that party to kind of come up with a possible plan to bring to the Select Board to discuss as a possible moving forward. So, stay tuned on that. You know, they were represented by counsel, it's, lawyers are involved on this, but there is a possible resolution agreement, and Pat is just advising us that, in that, it might make sense only because, again, this is so unconventional, and they've actually addressed pretty much all the concerns that were out there, so he would be surprised if the non-renewal was upheld, given that there's really no case on it. So he's basically recommending we keep our options open, and I just wanted to let you all know that there's a chance they will come back with another proposal to kind of resolve this, so stay tuned on that. But we, I also wanna say that we've been very firm to say we don't wanna go back to the board and do this all over again. It would need to be materially changed, there would need to be major assurances that something was different, otherwise, we don't wanna be back in the same position. World Cup, again, I think I mentioned it before, we're back, I had another monthly meeting, and we're starting, things are starting to ramp up, getting, we had another email with the Fire Chief and the Police Chief, a meeting with the Fire Chief and the Police Chief earlier this week or last week, with a team seeking to support the town, in which we can't hire them, we won't hire them, but it was interesting to hear their, they had worked at the World Cup Qatar, so hearing some of their perspectives was helpful to us, and as we move forward, it just makes us realize what small fish we are and kind of a big, a big motion going on. I mean, there's a lot, you know, FIFA seems to be a, quite an entity unto itself, and then we're dealing with, you know, the federal government to a degree, and then the state government, and then Boston, and then Foxborough, and where's the game being played? Foxborough. So we keep just staying at the table, reminding everybody that while they're calling it Boston, Soccer Boston, in fact, they're even gonna be naming the stadium that, while, during World Cup, that Foxborough is at the table. Yeah, they're rebranding the stadium for the game. I went on Saturday to speak to the Friends of Foxborough seniors, thanks to Mr. Duma to invite me, so it was great to go there. It was actually a great day to go after our community center vote, so obviously, hero is maybe too strong of a word when you walk into that crowd, so it was a great, it was a great reception, and it was, they're a great group of people. After that, I was able to swing by the touch of truck and see a few trucks and talk to some folks, so that was great. We do have, I don't know if anybody remembers, a few years ago, we had complaints about the CSX trains idling in people's backyards, we have those complaints again, so I'm working with Senator Feeney and Rep. Barrows to try to address that. You know, we always joke about trains and how it's like, there's God, and then there's the train, the railroad, and then everybody else, so it's, it's, it's an uphill battle, unfortunately, our, our legislators are very familiar with it, and they're there at the table with us, so we're working on that. We're working on updating our uptown parking map, we have a few new businesses to add, so we're gonna add things like crosswalks, accessible, accessible parking in the new parking lot on Market Street, so that'll be good for the summer. Katie's other major project, besides boards and committees, is our Meyer Rewards, and I'm very proud to say that the town collected all but 4% of the maximum awards, which very, kudos to Katie, I mean, she's literally taking classes to make sure we get our points, but she, she keeps on us all, and we, we get, this discounts our, our, you know, liability as we move forward, so it's, it's great, we do it this year and it pays off next year. And then today, we locked in electricity rates for the, for November of 2024 to November 2026. The good news is, the, the rate is lock, this is for the Foxborough's Power Forward Program, it's a municipal aggregation, everyone is enrolled in unless you opt out. And right now, you're paying, the Power Forward customers are paying 16.74 cents per kilowatt, and national grids at 18.21 cents per kilowatt, and they, we just locked in at 13.727 for 24 months, so, so that was good news for today. Mark Craig, our Director of Human Services, was accepted into the International City Managers' Gettysburg Institute, he was chosen out of, one out of 30 candidates in the whole country, so it's a leadership lessons, and it's a unique opportunity to learn, so he's really, he kinda tried on a whim, and he was accepted, so it's quite an honor. Tomorrow, our Fire Chief is being named the President of the Massachusetts Fire Chief Association, so, we do have a water tech position opening, and I mentioned in my presentation that I'm gonna be out of the office from June 5th to June 11th, on return on June 12th, I'll be out of state. So, construction updates, as everybody's noticed, Walnut Street is well underway, it's quite a mess over there, but, so that's two projects, it's the utility work associated with the signal and the sewer for Walnut and Commercial Street, which is 140, but also then on the site, you'll see that that 16 acres is being developed for the 204, 200 all affordable apartments. Today, I spoke to Paula Hearn at Schneider Electric, and he noted that demo planning is still ongoing, and it probably won't be till just after Labor Day that people notice demolition, like, stuff going on right now is interior, so around, right after Labor Day, they anticipate you'll start seeing the northern end of the site changing. They've been starting to approach neighbors to talk to them. One note that Maura Buckley, our communications specialist, will be working on is to get news out that there'll be a change in traffic next Tuesday, the 28th, the day after Memorial Day. They're gonna be installing a new fire pump house at, on Cacassett, this is Schneider, so they're gonna close their Pond Avenue entrance in order to install two new water supply pipes across the road. So, it might not take four days, but they do have four days planned out, it depends on the amount of ledge and rock they encounter, so Pond Ave will be closed, and all employees and commercial vehicles will enter through Cacassett Street via Mechanic Street. So the police and fire have been informed, but you might see some change of traffic. And then lastly, town permits, all the way in September 28th, I don't even wanna think about that, but the J.C.'s vendor fair will be from 9 to 3. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, Select Board update, anybody have anything?
No.
Nope, I have one quick thing, I got a phone call from Chief Grace, what was not, was not anything for the board to vote on, he just was asking, just as the chair, just my opinion, just so people know, Paige, you, obviously, you probably already know this, they're gonna set up the common differently for Memorial Day. In, in the past, you know, the speakers were facing like, you know, right across from South Street, any of the, the Boy Scouts, everybody in the street there is just sitting in the, you know, when I spoke a couple years ago, it was very hot, and I remember looking out and saying, oh my God, I'm glad I'm under a little bit of shade. So, Mike reached out to our Veterans Agent and said, hey, would you be opposed? And, and she's new here, so she was willing to listen to Mike, I mean, obviously, he, he's been around, seen a lot of Memorial Days here, and so basically, they're just gonna flip it around. And so the speakers are gonna face into the common, and that will give people can sit in the common, and if, I, it's funny, I said, it's too bad the benches weren't there already, they could've sat at the benches. But just so people, you know, you, you know, it's always been done that way, so keep your eyes open, the parade will, and just, just slightly differently, and then, and then we'll, the speakers will be there, and then, so anyhow, and I believe it's gonna be in the reporter this week mentioning, oh, he was gonna try to get in, just so people are aware of, just, you know, not much of a change, but it's just, we're gonna, I think it's nice, we'll be facing into the common, so, that's the only thing I have. And Dennis, down, you're in, nothing? You're in? Make sure I look at you, Bill. Okay, all right, so, action items, Deb?
Motion to accept the enrollment fees for the Junior Police Academy in the amount of $150, $150.
All second. All's in favor? I mean, I'm sorry, any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to accept the enrollment fees for the Junior Police Academy in the amount of $300.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept a donation to the K-9 Gift Fund on behalf of the Hockamart Kennel Club in the amount of $200.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept a donation for the Memorial Day 2024 luncheon from an anonymous donor in the amount of $448.50.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept a donation for memorial benches from numerous donors in the amount of $14,400.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes from the May 7th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All's, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks for watching.